Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who deserves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
And present.
Any memorials, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber to Donald F. Denny Quinn Senior, a lifelong Lowell resident. He was the beloved and devoted husband of Barbara Upton Quinn, with whom he would have celebrated their 65th wedding anniversary this coming November 8th. Denny was educated in the Lowell schools graduating from Keith Academy. He served with the United States Army. Denny worked at Sullivan Brothers Printers for 36 years and later worked and retired from MCI Concord, where he served as an industrial instructor. Denny was a communicant of the Immaculate Conception Parish in Lowell and a life member of the East End Club. He served the club in many capacities, including as their president and chaplain. Denny helped every year with their Toys for Tots drive and dressed up as Santa for their children's Christmas parties. He was also awarded the Man of the Year Award for his dedication to the East End Club. Surviving Denny, besides his wife Barbara, are his six children Patty Doyle, Donald Quinn Jr., Bobby Mamblow, Timmy Quinn, Kathy Micho, and Michael Quinn, his 12 grandchildren and his seven great-grandchildren with one on the way, his two brothers Robert and Tucker. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for Stephanie Dawn Steffi Calvert-Clairety, 41 years young, wife of Brandon Clarety. This month would have marked their eighth wedding anniversary. Steffi was educated in the Lowell schools and graduated from the Greater Lowell Vocational High School with the class of 2000. She further pursued her education at the Middlesex Community College. Stephanie was diagnosed with type 1 juvenile diabetes at the age of nine and was well-known locally for her advocacy work helping to fight the disease. Her unwavering dedication to this cause led her to raise more than $50,000 over the years. Her efforts were acknowledged and celebrated when she was honored at the House of Representatives for her diligent and compassionate commitment to shedding light on and supporting others battling this disease. Despite the challenges posed by her illness, she was resilient and unwavering. She also loved children. Prior to her condition worsening, she helped out at a local daycare, leaving an impact on the young lives she touched. She also found joy helping out at her family's flower shop, A Belvedere Florist in Lowell. In addition to her husband Brandon and her parents, Joe Calvert and Connie White Styes, she is survived by her sister Davina Brown, Andrea Calvert, and Brittany Moreau. She was predeceased by her brother Stephen Joseph Calvert. Her legacy is one of courage, strength, and bravery, especially in the face of despair. She will never be forgotten. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in the chamber. Yesterday was the September 11th, the 22nd year. And we, the city of Lowell, along with the police department, the fire department, and the Lowell High School, Air Force ROTC had a great service across the street from the city hall. So I would like to offer and remember those who died on that day and after due to the illness from the World Trade Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other memorials, moment of silence? Here, Non. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light for the duck in chamber. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the chamber tonight, as was everyone watching us from home. Today in the chamber, we have a full house. We're welcoming the policewomen from the Lowell Police Department here. Thank you for being here. We now start with the meeting. The first part is the mayor's business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion accepted by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Rourke. On favors, I post say no. The eyes have it, motions carry. I just have two items here that I would like to switch. I would like to address the proclamation to honor the National Policewoman's Day first, detectives out of order by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Scott. Motion is passed. I just want to say briefly on the proclamation for the National Policewoman's Day, I'm very honored as well are that the entire city council, the administration, and the entire Lowell Police Department that we are today acknowledging, honoring, recognizing the policewomen in our city. We know that the role that you work in the professional are very challenging, just like any other male counterpart. But we also know the balancing act, the extra balancing act in your personal lives as well. That's why we are very, very grateful for all your service. To have the policewomen in our city and to have the representation of the female officers in our community, that's a huge deal. Just, you know, we need to really lift each other up. We need this type of diversity. We need this type of community policing. Just on a personal note and on a lighter side a little bit, as I mentioned earlier, when I first came to the United States as a young person, I watched many police shows on TV. And one of my favorite was actually called Policewomen. And of course, I'm dating myself, as my colleague told me earlier, this TV show was from the 70s. And I thought it was pretty cool. But growing up in Lowell back there in the 1980s, this is not to say that they were not female police officers, but I just didn't see any women police officers in the neighborhood, in the community, until much more recently. And I can tell you, that makes a huge difference to our community, to have the policewomen in our community, you know, building relationships with the schools, with the neighborhood, with the families, with the children. It makes that much difference. It makes our community not only safe, as a factual, but in terms of the feelings of it, of having the female officers representing the families, because of the families is very important. And to have that sense of safety, that sense of safety in our community is very important. And I speak on behalf of the manager's office, the police department, the entire department, and the entire city council. We are very proud to have you, and we're on the right path. We need more policewomen in the future. And I know that both the manager and the police chief are working towards increasing the number of policewomen in our city. Before I open the floor, I would like to read the proclamation right now. City of Lowell, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, may honor the mayor a proclamation. Whereas National Policewoman's Day is celebrated each year on September 12th, the day acknowledges and celebrates the contributions of female police officers who enforce law and order around the country. Today, women made up roughly 13.3% of full-time law enforcement officers in the United States. And whereas the National Policewoman's Day hopes to rectify that by encouraging more women to join the service, campaigns and events are organized to urge more women to take up law enforcement roles, along with expressing gratitude to these officers, that they also hopes for a future where law enforcement bodies will have stronger female representation. And whereas the city of Lowell honors and recognizes the invaluable contributions made by women within law enforcement, we acknowledge their dedication, professionalism, and commitment to ensuring public safety. Signed by myself and the entire city council. Before I introduce Captain Obrega, I would like to open to the council on the floor first, if there's anybody who would like to make a comment. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd just like to first say thank you. And it's impressive to see, especially in an occupation that historically has been dominated by men, it's impressive to see in Lowell, we have some tough women. They've broken those barriers down, and they more than hold their own. And I just say salute, thank you, and you're paving the way for future generations of women to realize this is an occupation that is accessible to them as well. So thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for your service. And I know you juggle a lot besides being a police officer. You have a family, you have, you know, your children to take care of. For me particularly, we are very proud to have Cambodian police, female police officers that's breaking the barrier because the police officers in our community in the whole country are not well-respected or, and feared. So when you talk to an Asian person, they may not look at you in the eye. And oftentimes, we think differently, but it's a sign of respect. So I just want to thank you and congratulations to all. That's what you do to keep us safe. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could not let this evening pass as a woman myself to congratulate each and every one of you lovely, beautiful women to do, get involved in a profession that is not an easy place to be, but yet you have the courage to do that and serve our city in a very dignified, professional way. I'm so very proud, as everybody in this room and our city is so proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations. I will be worried because it's not easy today. It's a very difficult position to be in. I'm sure that your family is very proud of you too, but I know in the back of their mind, they worry about you. I will be praying every night for you because I know how difficult it is. But behind every successful man is that woman, but you're not behind anymore, you're up front. And I'm so very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also just like to thank all of you for your service to the city. You're incredible role models to the young girls in this city looking up at you. I told the story privately in the other room. I was in Target shopping, and a female police officer walked in, and all of the girls working there got all excited that there was a female police officer walking in the door. They were kind of like joking, you know, we could do that, we could do that. And that's why it's so important for you all to be here, to be role models, and just to be such an important part of the city. And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo the silence of my colleagues and not only thank you for your service, but also thank you for your involvement in the community. One of the main factors of making Lowell one of the best places to live, work, and to raise a family. So thank you very much for your service to our entire city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of you have one of the hardest jobs in our country and one of the most honorable jobs. What you do is you bring honor to our city. You make it a better place for all of us to live. I'm proud to say that you protect me because I need that. But seriously, after this meeting, I don't know if Wayne's going to chase me, so I may need you guys. But no, seriously, it's important to have diversity and have all of you in our lives. And we can't thank you as citizens. You go through some tough times as we did in the past. You kept your heads up high, and that's what's important to our city. And it's because of all of you that police are getting back to where they should have been and never brought to where they were in the past. And it's because of the honor that all of you bring to our city every day. And I thank you for that.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wish to thank this group here for their service to the city. But I also want to say, there's a saying, and it gets said a lot, almost to the point of cliche, but it is very true, and I think it's really important, that if you can see it, you can be it. And I think this recognition here tonight is something that is important for many of the young girls and young women in our city. And your service and you being role models for many other young women in the community will make a difference, and it will result in more young women realizing that they can enter this field and entering that field and protecting our city in the years to come. So thank you very much for your service.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My colleagues have pretty much said it all, but I just wanted to echo my thanks for all of your contributions to our community and the hard work that you do every day. We're all in a better place because of the work you do and the fact that you get up in the morning and put that uniform on and come out on the streets. It's not an easy job. We've all recognized that. We've all mentioned that many, many times in here. And so the fact that you're willing to do it and you're willing to contribute to our community and make it a better place to live and work, really, just, we can't say thank you enough. So thanks for being here, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to recognize all of you tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo all my colleagues, but also said this, that not too long ago, this city made history by naming the first Hispanic female captain, Captain Obrega. And I'm sure there's more history to it in the future. All this, you know, the work that they've done, they've done their work more than that. They've done their work with compassion. And that's what we need, and that's what we need going forward in the city. More of women officers in the rank, captains, lieutenant, sergeant. The door is open right now. So thank you for all you've done for this city.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you also, and thank you for putting yourself out there, for standing up for your community and being leaders. And we can't thank you enough. So thank you very much.
And we do have a lot to celebrate tonight, as Counselor Noon mentioned. We have the first female police captain here with us. And to accept the proclamation on all the women's police officers and the entire police department, I would like to ask you to come to the podium to say a few words, and I will present this to you after your speech. Captain.
Is the mic working? Great. Okay, I wrote a little speech. I'll keep it under five minutes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marison Obrega. I am a captain with the Lowell Police Department, where I've been serving for over 25 years. I would like to begin by thanking City Manager Golden, Mayor Chow, and the entire city council, and our very own Superintendent of Police, Chief Greg Hurdon, along with our deputies who are here today for honoring and recognizing the women of the Lowell Police Department. Today, September 12th, we gather here to commemorate the National Women's Police Day, a momentous occasion that holds special significance for the Lowell Police Department and the women that have served and are serving as law enforcement officers here in the city of Lowell. We gather to pay tribute and celebrate the incredible, momentous contributions of these women who serve our community with courage, dedication, and a resounding commitment to public safety. On this 12th day of September 2023, it is also crucial to acknowledge the historic milestones that have paved the way for women in policing. It wasn't too long ago that women faced countless barriers when trying to join the ranks of law enforcement. Yet through their unwavering determination, women gradually broke those barriers down and proved that they are just as capable as their male counterparts. These women not just broke barriers, they shattered some of the stereotypes of what this profession means and what it represents. They have shown that gender should never be a barrier to pursuing a career in law enforcement. The Lowell Police Department currently has 28 women who are protecting and serving every single day. Women within our police department serve in various roles, from patrol officers to detectives, from school resource officers to youth outreach officers, to NEMLEC and SWAT team members. These women right here. Their presence is not merely symbolic, it is transformative. Some of them are married, some of them are mothers, some of them are supervisors, others are military veterans. All of them are awesome. Over the past few years, the women of the Lowell Police Department have really stepped up to the challenge. Five have been promoted to sergeant, one to lieutenant, and one to captain. Women in policing bring unique perspectives and empathy, a sense of nurturing and skills that enrich the profession and enhance public safety. One of the most remarkable aspects of Women's Police Day is the celebration of diversity within our police forces, especially our department. Women from different backgrounds, ethnicities, cultures are united in their commitment to protect and serve. This diversity reflects the broader society that they work tirelessly to safeguard, sending a powerful message that law enforcement is for everyone, regardless of gender or background. Let's take a moment to recognize the countless stories of valor and heroism displayed by the women in law enforcement. They have faced many dangerous situations, have apprehended criminals, and protected our communities with unwavering resolve. These brave women serve as role models for their future generations, inspiring young women and girls to dream big without limitations, showing them that they too can achieve what they aspire to achieve. These dedicated individuals have demonstrated exceptional bravery, leadership, and resilience in the face of adversity. They are role models not only within our department, but also for our entire community. The stories of courage and dedication within the Lowell Police Department are numerous. From responding to emergencies in the middle of the night to building strong bonds and trust with the communities that they serve, women still show up and have proven time and time again that they are willing to go above and beyond the call of duty. They are, these women here, are our local heroes, and their contributions should never be underestimated. As we celebrate National Women's Police Day here in Lowell, let us also remember the challenges that the women in law enforcement continue to face. It is our collective responsibility to support and empower these officers, ensuring that they receive the respect, opportunities, and recognition that they deserve. Furthermore, let us not forget that the Lowell Police Department is not just a force of law enforcement, it is also a force for positive change. In conclusion, National Policewoman's Day in Lowell, Massachusetts is a day to celebrate the women officers of the Lowell Police Department. It is a day to honor their achievements, diversity, and their dedication to keeping our communities safe. Let us continue to support and empower these women as they serve as beacons of hope, inspiration, and leadership within our beloved city of Lowell. I am so proud to be serving alongside each and every one of them. Thank you very much for this recognition.
We already did, I think.
Captain, can we do a picture with all the officers, with all the counselors?
Sure. Yeah, we're gonna do another picture real quick.
We'll just take 30 seconds for some movement here in the chamber. Okay, we now go back to follow what's on the agenda. Next is citations to organizations coming to our city. And I would like to welcome the CEO of Vinfin, Ms. Yen, to come to the podium and ask to present this citation to you for all the organizations plan to do with our city. This is a citation, be it hereby known to all, that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Vinfin. For the last 45 years, Vinfin has been a leading provider of community-based services for people who struggle with autism, behavioral health challenges, brain injuries, intellectual and developmental disabilities, and mental health conditions. Being one of the largest nonprofit employers, Vinfin's staff is filled with caring and dedicated workers who are looking to help the individuals they serve achieve their goals. Since the beginnings, the mission for Vinfin has been to transform the lives of struggling individuals to become more independent, productive, and valued members of the community with services that promote the recovery, resiliency, habitations, and self-determination of the individuals they serve. Vinfin's commitment and dedication has led to the growth and empowerment of countless individuals who can now live their lives on their own terms, regardless of their struggle. Now therefore, I, Master Curry Chow, am honored to present this citation to you, signed by myself and the entire city council. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Yen, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, thank you. I'll be very brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the kind words. Good evening, city council, city manager, who needs to take a break, and leaders and citizens of Lowell. Thank you so much for allowing me to join this chamber tonight to tell you a little bit about Vinfin, but really to spread the word about mental health because it's a huge need faced by Lowell and all of the country. It affects many, many people. Many of you probably have loved ones with mental health challenges. I do myself. And there's some challenges, there are serious challenges that need to be addressed. Fortunately, there are organizations like Vinfin that are bringing solutions to the community every day. As Mr. Mayor cited, we have been doing this work for over 40 years. We're actually one of the largest such organization in Massachusetts with over 3,000 employees working every day, serving people with mental illnesses. We're particularly proud of our work in Lowell. This is actually our biggest region. We serve 10,000. We serve thousands of Lowellians every year. And we're particularly proud of our relatively new twenty-four-seven Community Behavioral Health Center that we opened in January. So since January, we have served over fourteen hundred crisis cases. And it's a twenty-four-seven walk-in center. There is a phone number that you can call. You can call nine eight eight, which is the national number. You can also call the Vinfin number, which is nine seven eight six seven four six seven four four. And in a month's time, we're going to open our new facility at three hundred ninety-one Varnum Street, which is, we used to be the old Solomon Center of Mental Health, but we're going to reopen the center to receive patients who need short-term stay, both youth and adults. So we're very excited. Thank you for your trust, your support. Our door is open to everyone, whether you are a migrant, whether you are an incarcerated person trying to re-enter into the community, whether you are students, you know, school just started. Many kids need our support, and this is Suicide Prevention Week. Don't forget that we have many of our loved ones that are struggling. Work is hard, but we have trained professionals who can help. And we count on your trust and support, and we have to do this together. So on behalf of Vinfin, thank you so much, and we're proud to be part of Lowell.
Thank you, Ms. Yang. I would like to present a citation to you. As Ms. Yang had mentioned, and we've been reached out from many organizations that work with mental health issues. And as you know, this is Suicide Awareness Week. And on behalf of entire City Council, I would like to read this proclamation to recognize the importance of recognizing this mental health problem. City of Lowell Commonwealth of Massachusetts, by my honor, mayor, a proclamation. Whereas suicide accounts for one of every one hundred deaths globally, and it is the second-leading cause of death for Americans between the age of ten and thirty-four. In the United States, American Indians, Alaskan Native youth, LGBTQI-plus youth, and rural men are disproportionately affected. For too many service members, veterans, and law enforcement officials have taken or consider taking their own lives. And whereas the nine hundred eighty-eight suicide and crisis, the eighty-eight suicide and crisis lifeline has received more than five point five million calls, texts, and chats. Suicide Prevention Week aims to reduce the stigma surrounding suicide and encourage the pursuit of mental health assistance, because going to therapy should be as normalized as going to the gym. And whereas on this week, we remember those lives lost to suicide, and we commit to connect to those who are struggling and encourage communities, organizations, and governments to work together to prevent suicide. Now therefore, I, Sakari Chow, Mayor of City of Lowell, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim September tenth to September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, a Suicide Prevention Week and the City of Lowell, signed by myself and the entire City Council. And I will provide this proclamation later on to Ms. Lisa Golden, who will accept this on behalf of the city and the nonprofit partnerships. Next on the agenda is two point one, two point four. This is the presentation. And now would like, you know, one of our asset and treasure is the Lowell National Park Services. I would like to ask Ms. Julie Golanska to please approach the podium to speak on One City Many Cultures Grand Opening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. It's so good to be here with you tonight and the whole City Council, City Manager. Joining me is Supervisory Park Ranger Emily Donovan. She is instrumental in the project that I'm going to share some information with you about, as well as extend an invitation. For the past five years, the National Park Service has been working with community members in Lowell to create a new exhibit on the diverse cultures of this wonderful city. We are now ready for the grand opening of One City Many Cultures. This exhibit is going to open in the Patrick J. Mogan Cultural Center in Lowell National Historical Park on Saturday, September twenty-third, so about ten days from now. One City Many Cultures is about how culture shapes and connects people and communities through the stories of Lowell over time. It is also an immersive and interactive introduction to Lowell as a vibrant multicultural city. As all of us know, Lowell is an ideal location for exploring cultural expressions, because it has always been and continues to be a place that welcomes people from across the globe to this community. The exhibit is presented in sights, and sounds, and touches, and even smells. It is presented in many of the languages spoken here in Lowell, English, Spanish, Kamai among them. It is also an exhibit that encourages people to contribute to it. So there are many opportunities for people to share their thoughts and their experiences and to continue to build on the story that we tell here in Lowell. It has been very important to us that the community members co-created this exhibit with the National Park Service. Since 2018, thirty people participated in ongoing conversations about their own lived experiences to drive the content and design of the exhibit. These are people who showed up and shared their time and their talents after meeting, and meetings, and meetings, and many reviews of exhibit texts and exhibit panels. More than a hundred individuals contributed their stories, objects, photographs, and other material to help convey the many cultures of the city in their own words and their own ways. It truly reflects the people of Lowell, the people who call Lowell home. This project is a two-million-dollar investment by the National Park Service in the exhibit itself and improvements in the building, the Mogan Cultural Center. It replaces the Immigrants Exhibit, which many people remember that was installed in the Mogan Center in nineteen eighty-eight, and it served us well for thirty years. We anticipate that in the next ten years, over one million people will see One City Many Cultures, including over four hundred thousand students, many of them from the Lowell Public Schools, who participate in educational programs through the Sangus Industrial History Center, which is our partnership with UMass Lowell. I hope all of you will join us for the grand opening on Saturday, September twenty-third. The opening ceremony will take place at eleven AM in Boarding House Park, followed by an afternoon of activities, crafts, performances, and music. And it's also really important that this exhibit is going to be shared as part of the National Park System. We are one of four hundred and twenty-five units of the National Park System across the country. It is very unique and very special to have a National Park in downtown Lowell. And we hope that people across the country, across the world, will understand what an amazing place this is by visiting One City Many Cultures. We're happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Otherwise, we hope to see you on September twenty-third.
Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here now, thank you, Ms. Golanska. This sounds to be, it's going to be an exciting event. Thank you for being here to make the presentation.
Thank you so much.
I know that we are a few minutes past seven for public hearing, but let's take up one more issue on the presentation so we could move along the agenda. On item two from two point four, this is on Transformative Development Initiative, TDI. And here to present this is Mr. Nate Robertson from Mass Development. I'd like to ask Mr. Robertson to please come to the podium and make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Chow, City Councilors, and City Manager, Tom. I've got a presentation here. Can we drop the, it's not very long. I'll keep it brief, but could we drop the projector slides? Awesome. Just so I'm using the time. Again, my name is Nate Robertson. I work for Mass Development, which is the state's economic development and finance agency. Also serves as the state's land bank in a lot of instances. It's a quasi-public agency that operates throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, doing a lot of finance work, economic development work, and business support work. In addition to that, it works a lot with cities and towns in the Commonwealth on real estate technical assistance, real estate support, and development support. So it does a lot. I work for a wing of it called Transformative Development. And we, it's a program that cities and towns can apply to. It's a competitive program. And we get sent into districts throughout, in different gateway cities here in the Commonwealth to work at a neighborhood level to really understand the businesses, the people, the organizations within those neighborhoods and work in a way to support them in their development. So I work here in the acre. The city applied for this designation a couple of years ago, was awarded the designation, and I've been here since last September, really getting to know the neighborhood, getting to know the people in it, getting to know the properties, and really just becoming familiar with the city. And we've been able to accomplish a lot in that year. The secret sauce of the Transformative Development Program is the partnership. We, I don't operate alone. You know, I don't know the city. I work with folks who do know the city. The city being a crucial partner in that partnership. They are and have been an incredible partner to date. Alongside that partnership is the Lowell Plan, UMass Lowell, Coalition for a Better Acre, Lowell Housing Authority, Pinella Restaurants, and community teamwork. So a lot of the regular players here in Lowell sit around the table, and we discuss and come to consensus on ways that we can deploy resources in the acre effectively together in order to see a shared vision for its future. Nice. We got it. I think I'm like halfway through now. So I talked a little bit about TDI. Again, it's a program designed to accelerate economic development within, at a neighborhood-level scale. We do that by building a local culture of co-investment. That means working together with nonprofits, with public partners, with private businesses, with volunteer organizations to make sure that folks are pointed and working towards a shared vision. TDI districts concentrate economic development activities, resources, investments within designated neighborhood areas. And so if you can see the map right there, this is the area in Lowell which we've been focusing on for the past year and will continue to focus on for the next two years. It's got fuzzy boundaries. That's a term we use a lot. There aren't strict borders to the district, but most and more, rule of thumb is that it's along the Merrimack Street corridor sort of from Nabana Coffee Shop all the way down to University Crossing there. The TDI, so I'm a TDI fellow. I work full-time here in Lowell. It's the sole focus of my attention. And I work alongside the local partners, which I had talked about before, to see out that shared vision. So what are we trying to do in the acre? We are trying to support local creatives and the acre through public art. Now, this isn't the only initiative we're working on. We've done a lot of placemaking activities, helping small businesses in the neighborhood. And I'd be happy to talk about that another time. But for tonight, we're really focusing on a project that we've called Art in the Acre. And again, it's this, the goal of which was to support local creatives in getting more public art in the acre. We put out a, in partnership with Selbert Perkins Design and Mosaic Lowell, we put out a call for artists asking them to be, for their involvement in the project. We had forty-five artists respond. And we also asked residents. In order to figure out what we wanted to see in the neighborhood, we wanted residents to be driving that shared vision. So we asked residents what they, how they saw the neighborhood, what they wanted to see in the neighborhood, what words they associated with the neighborhood, where they wanted to see improvements. And a lot of the same questions that the city is asking in its master planning process. And that's why these partnerships are so important. We get to work together on sharing information. We got seventy-three different responses. We had a whole host of specific locations where folks wanted to see things. And we also saw some words that came to the surface when describing the acre. Diversity, community, pride, grit, being a few of those. So we wanted to make sure that we had art that reflected those shared characteristics. We also asked folks what they wanted to see in public art in the district. And what we heard overwhelmingly was energy, color, and abundance. So we asked those forty-five artists for design ideas. We paid those artists stipends. We paid fifteen of them for design ideas in the neighborhood, and we got fifteen really cool ideas for what we can do for public art in the TDI district. And these are a smattering of what those ideas were. Unfortunately, we don't have an unlimited budget, so we couldn't fund all of them. But we funded a chunk of them. We're funding six of them. We're looking at funding six. So these are the six that the partnership picked to fund. You might recognize a couple of those locations from the acre. Again, mostly right down Merrimack Street, but also Ecumenical Plaza is one of the locations we're really looking at putting public art in. Here's the locations where we're seeing, where we'd like to put these public art pieces. And we're working through the permitting process now. Again, the secret sauce of the success for initiatives like this is how strong our partnerships are. A saying that I like to parrot is really, projects move at the speed of trust. And if you don't have the trust of partners around that table, then projects move very slowly. So the city's been a wonderful partner, both the Historic Board, the Cultural Affairs Office, Planning Economic Development, and moving all of this stuff forward, because those are all boards needed to secure proper permitting for these pieces. So we're getting approvals. We've picked those six to fund. We're seeking an agreement to install three colorful sculptural fish on Ecumenical Plaza. So of the six, five of these public art pieces are in private parcels. So we're working with those property owners. But the sixth is on a public parcel, and that's the Ecumenical Plaza. And it was a piece submitted by Jay Hungate, who's done several other sculptures throughout the city, who's involved in the Kinetic Sculpture Race happening this weekend, which is why he couldn't be here. But he submitted this proposal to put three fish in the Ecumenical Plaza. They would swivel with the wind. They include solar lighting, and they symbolize sustenance, faith, and perseverance traits which are present in the neighborhood as a place where countless immigrants made their journey to. The fish are pretty cool. They're made from recycled catfish cans, which I don't know how he does that, but he's got a whole plan on how he does it, and they look pretty cool. And so that's what the layout looks like. This is an aerial view. That middle image is an aerial view of the Ecumenical Plaza, where he's looking at putting those fish stands, so they stand, you know, above, above human height. And that's kind of it for the presentation. Really, the intention for me going before you tonight was, A, to talk a little bit, introduce myself, talk a little bit of the TDI program, and also to really familiarize yourselves with the Art in the Acre project, which we've been, which we've been moving forward as a priority. Some quick answers are, how long will these pieces be up? We're looking at a year, ideally, weather permitting, knowing that, you know, weather can sort of be an early end to some of these pieces, but our goal is a year. If they get damaged, we've got a plan for that. We've set aside ten- We've set aside 10% of our implementation budget to establish a maintenance funds to pay for the costs associated with damage or decommissioning. So we've got a phase-out plan in place. And when will they be installed? We are looking at October 2023 permits permitting. So that's our goal there. And yeah, open the floor to questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Looks like a great project. I just... Will you be looking to expand into other sections of the city down the road, do you know?
So the TDI program, it's a competitive program that cities apply to, to Mass Development. The acre, that district was granted a three-year designation. After those three years are up, the city can extend that district, change the district, but put it in other neighborhoods as well. And that's something that we've done in other gateway cities.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Nate. Nate and I have been working together, and I think this is one additional piece that will, you know... Long way, so my microphone about to die. So what happened is that this will help enhance what's going on in the acre, like you talked about, the Merrimack Street from the city hall all the way to University Crossing, and as a result will be the neighborhood around that. Market Street, Salem Street, Cabot will be also benefit from that as well. And we were talking about helping the small business, and you were there, and we are really excited as the acre. I know Counselor Robertson would love to have that at Centerville, but the acre got it first, like Counselor. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Here and now, thank you again, Mr. Robertson, for here to make the presentation. And that completes the presentations and the citations. Need a motion to accept item 2.2, 2.3, all of 2.3 and all of 2.4 by Counselor Young, second by Counselor Robinson, on favor, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We're past seven o'clock. We have to do the public hearing, it's only one item. Let's take that item up first before we continue with the agenda. Section 5 is the utility public hearing. 5.1, National Grid requests installation of handhole and underground conduit at Appleton and Guam Street. This portion is open to all of those who are in favor. Open to all those in favor. Mr. Clerk, no, nobody speaking in favor. That portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. That portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here and now, need a motion to refer to a white inspector for report and recommendation by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon, on favor, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go back to the agenda where we left off, which is quickly on the city clerk's item. 3.1, the minutes of city council meeting, August 22nd. City council special meetings, August 28th. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here and now, need a motion to accept a placement file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Drinkwater, on favor, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Counselor Young?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to move the item 7.4? We have a presentation by the artwork that Nate made presentation, so if it will be okay with the rest of the body.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Young to suspend the rule and take item 7.4 out of order, second by Counselor Mercier. 7.4 is a vote license agreement with Jay Hungate. Mr. Clerk, you have the... City floor and city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute a license and temporary access agreement between the city floor and artist Jay Hungate relative to invite... Relative to Ecumenical Plaza, Lowell, Massachusetts, and to execute all other documents related to this agreement. Any comments? Counselor Young?
Mr. Hungate will unable to be here, but Peter Cruz will be here to answer any question that the counselor may have before the vote. Peter, you want to...
Any comments or questions by any of the councilor? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. So could you just explain what this is? Is this for the fish? Or is this for... Okay. And I... So threw you to the manager. I haven't been over there in about a year or so, but have we fixed the bricks? There's some bricks missing on the platform.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Yes, we are aware of that. And leading up to Points of Light, actually, the DBW crew did a fantastic job getting in there and recovering and re-raving things. We're actually in really great shape over there right now. We're just even elevating that further.
All right. And I want to thank all parties that cleaned up that whole area. I know there's a lot of landscaping on both sides, so the whole area looks great. So thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Manager? Mr. Managers, to Mr. Masaro?
Just so you know, the gate over there, where there was a car went through it, is still damaged. It's secure. It's out to bid. It's getting repaired.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now, need a motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getchier?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Levin Hayes?
Thank you both for being here. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're under suspension of the rules, there's a person here to speak on a petition that he has 9.3. If I could suspend the rules and allow Mr. Patel to come up, I'm sure that after he leaves, half of the gallery will be empty, but that's okay.
Motion by Counselor Mercier to suspend the rule, to take item 9.3 out of order, second by Counselor Noon. 9.3 is miscellaneous. Mr. Nathan Patel requests discussion with city council regarding amendment of city tobacco regulations. Do you have any comments, questions? Motion to have Mr. Patel come speak. Mr. Patel?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my beloved counselor, Mr. Manager. Hard-working city official, and my fellow citizen. First of all, I am apologized, and I'm sorry, any infraction or violation by, on behalf of retailer, to selling cigarette to minor. But they pay the price for that. But they have hearing to put this audience on May 10. My petition, if you see the date, I want to address before May 10. But because I talked to Dan Rook and Mr. Masaro, there's too many motion here. I don't want to come before and waste your time. And after talking to Mrs. Golden, when Masaro in my office, they think they're not going to do anything other than the state law, because the motion says they're going to strengthen the state law. So that's the thing. So I asked him, my counselor, and that day I went to hearing, and this petition I hand over to Mrs. Golden, and she hand over to city lawyer, Mr. McKenna. And he didn't even look at it, and he says, "This board has absolute power to pass anything." I think our president even don't have absolute power. So growing up, my father used to say that, "If you stole radish, you get punished, just slap on the face." You can't kill somebody because of stealing radish." So I'm comparing this with the radish. So we have, in Massachusetts, 301 town and small cities, and we have 50 bigger cities, Lowell size to go to Boston. None, I researched, none has this draconian law to punish after paying $1,000 and shut down your store for the selling cigarette for three days. What kind of power they have to do this? Now, look at the date, okay? They passed this law at the middle of the night, May 10. They call hearing, but it's nothing but the hearing. I don't know what they need, know the definition of hearing or not, because they come with premeditated. They just go one way, like we are criminal, we are a drug dealer. They treat like that. So they passed this law on 10th of May. So they have seen operation on April 21st and April 14th, after three days of fast. So four people violated. They don't knowing the... Knowing that this audience. And on May 14th, three people violated. That's 96% rate. People without knowing this rate, they comply there. And on that top of that, the April 21st, it's three weeks before May 10. And still, they didn't pass on before that. They still go back and retroactively shut down this store, starting September 25th. You think they're going to stand in the law of the court in the one second? So this guy, Tobacco Control Officer, Mr. Victor Pogresias, I'm pronouncing wrong name. He just remind me, Mrs. Mercier knows that she's here for a long time, like we used to have building inspector like Alan Frazier. And this board of health is only worried about them, not retailer, business people. We work 80 hours per week. Some people work there and their pals work for another place. So all this infraction happened with the employee, not there. So no matter what, how you train that, they don't care. And I still, I'm apologized. Nobody should sell. I don't smoke myself. I didn't drink myself. Nobody should drink and smoke. So what I'm saying is, before they even pass it, they should at least consult our manager or counselor, that we're going to put this draconian law, or audience, whatever you call it, and don't punish us. We, every day, we go to shop. We risk our life. I tell my wife, I might don't come home someday, because you get shot by somebody. I am in the safe neighborhood. My wife got stabbed 13 times in 1994. So how you feel? And these people, this tobacco officer treat us like criminals. Another thing, the lady works here in HR department. Her name is Linda Freitas. She working tonight. She shouldn't be here that night. So her father owned the liquor store, Turco Liquor Store. So she asked, same question I asked to this member of board of health. After paying this $1,000, why is this harass penalties to us? So you see that they tell you is on the LLTC, and you can see the video. None of the member from the Health Department said that this is our audience. They said, "This is the state law. That's why we're doing that." How fair they are. They can't... They feel so guilty about themselves. That gets said is a state face, that this is put by state. This is a wide lie. So I'm urging you, Counselor, do something about this, because this is draconian. And I tell you, Mr. Manager, as a state representative, used to swing by at my place.
Mr. Patel, if I could interrupt you, your fine is up. If you could summarize and wrap it up, please.
So he always ask how business doing, and we always talk about cigarette and everything. And he's so worried about business. So four years ago, when our new treasurer came, want to put lottery online, Mr. Manager, as a state representative, he called Lowell Sun and asked to call my store, so find out what implication that have to the business. So we have friendly, business-friendly manager, but we have department who punish for no reason. Of course, we pay the price for that, and nobody should sell it, and I'm apologized for that. So thank you. Thank you for giving me chance to speak with you, but I hope you do something. But otherwise, if they shut down on 23rd July, this store is not going to stay in the minute... Is not going to stand in the court of law, because they go back to 21st of April, and they pass this law on May 10th at the night. Another thing, to highest official bring to the notice to me, if you go shut down for three days, why you call hearing and call the retailer at the Health Department? Doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Counselor Mercier? Counselor Mercier, might have a question. Counselor Mercier?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that in this world, in this city, we have rules and laws that we have to pay attention to. And I think that the business owners that sell, let's say, in his case, tobacco cigarettes in that respect, they're trying to do the best that they can. I'm not going to say that they get eyes on everybody all the time. I know that sometimes people slip through the cracks. I understand that. But there is an issue that Mr. Patel probably, I don't know if you got it, but I did look at it to some degree. The state Board of Health sets rules and policies. In my opinion, from what I observed, the city can adopt certain of these rules in the Health Department. And if people are not following the rules and they have to pay a fine, which in this particular instance, the first offense was $1,000, but they closed him down, not Mr. Patel, but someone in the audience here, for three days, that they couldn't sell any of that product. And I really feel that I don't want minors to be sold cigarettes, but I don't have eyes in the back of my head, and I think they're trying to do the best that they can. But the thing that I'm trying to stress is, and they have paid their fine, and they have done and abided by the law, but I look at this as double jeopardy. If you're going to fine someone, fine them. If they're going to do it again, it's a second offense. It's $2,000. On top of it, you're not only fining them, you're closing them down for three days, and then it's more days. I think that it should be either one or the other, but both, in my opinion, is not fair. So this is the whole issue that I'm concerned about with this problem that was brought before us. If you want to close them down three days, then don't fine them. But you're doing... But the city of Lowell is doing both, and I think that's not fair. I think it's not fair. I don't want children to smoke. I did smoke. It bothered my lungs. It affected me. I understand there's a danger there. But I think that if people are going to sell to minors, I think they have to be more careful. I think they have been more careful. I just think that it's double jeopardy, and that's the issue that I'm... I'd like to refer his motion, unless anybody else wants to speak on it, I would refer his petition to the Board of Health and take another look at it, or to the manager, and see if perhaps, do we really need to doubly wham-bang someone? I don't know. That's... I mean, maybe it's me, but I have compassion. This is a business owner that has done many, many things for the city of Lowell, many, many people that are of Indian descent, and that's why I'm concerned.
Before we take up your motion on the floor, Counselor, a couple other...
Second.
Want to speak on this first?
Sure. If there's other people.
And then we'll come back to your motion. Counselor Rook?
I would second Counselor Mercier's motion, you know, send to Law Office and just get some, you know, an explanation, you know, of how it works and how it happened, and, you know, just to make sure that the double jeopardy part is not something that, you know, is plausible in this situation. And other than that, I echo Counselor Mercier's comments, as she said earlier. So I'll second her motion, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share the frustrations of Mr. Patel, and Mr. Patel spoke on behalf of his youngest They didn't acknowledge the mistake that they make, and they pay for that mistake. From what I learned, a little that I learned, that the fine was paid for first offense. On top of that, a three-day suspension. I'm not sure if that, is that apply across the board in the Commonwealth? I like the idea that Counselors Mercier's and Counselor Rook's second, is that refer to the Board of Health and/or maybe city solicitor to see that if first offense has to do with a $1,000 fine, do that. And if other city and town do not add on to a three-day suspension, we shouldn't do that as well. We shouldn't do that. We have to be consistent how we apply things. So thanks. So thanks.
Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. If I can just suggest one thing to the maker of the motion, if in the report, we can just outline the fining process and the amounts to the fine, because I, I'm not sure, there's just not enough information in what we read to say what the fines are. I, I have no idea of any of this, so I just would ask that we could outline the fines within the motion and the process, that's all. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. The motion on the floor is to refer to the Board of Health, Counselor, so if that passed, that will be discussed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure of that, yep.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correct. So there was a public hearing that happened in May, that modified changes to our policies that we have. Did those go in front of the legal department for review at that time?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. And counsel, that the Board of Health has the sole authority on that, so they have the ability to hear, have a hearing, and make a decision. To answer the question I think that the council brought up, currently right now, my, my understanding is the state law is one thousand dollars, and the Board of Health decided to put a second, second piece onto it, which was the three-day. So might, it might be a letter from the council, or a letter drafted from the manager's office over to the Board of Health to take a look at this again. That might be the way to, to look at this, to see if the Board of Health would reconsider their, their thoughts.
So it's their purview to do it, they don't need legal review, they don't need anything like that.
That is correct.
And so my other question on this is just as Mr. Patel brought up, that this looks like it was implemented May tenth, and he is stating that he was, the action happened in April, so I don't know how you'd go retroactive on it as well, but, so I guess that's something we'll see in the report going forward. Thank you.
Counselor.
Can I run a second?
Yes, Mr. Patel, yep.
Why don't we go by state, state guideline? On this one state guideline, instead of adopting our own? Because I, as I told you, three hundred one city, town, and fifty, fifty big city, none have had this law, other than Lowell adopted that, until I didn't know, my Cambridge has it. But Cambridge is a big city, you can compare Cambridge and Lowell, we are a blue-collar city. Cambridge have per capita income is sixty, forty-four thousand, and household income is hundred and seven thousand. Lowell has thirty thousand per capita income, and household income is sixty-two thousand. You can't compare apple and oranges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Manager would like to make a comment, we'll allow that, and after that, we'll take the motion on the floor by Counselor Mercier. I believe it does need further discussion at the Board of Health. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. If it's the wish of the body, I do believe we can put a letter together asking the Board of Health to reconsider the, the double jeopardy as it was considered, and just go with state law, if that's the wish of the body. But there is, there is a council motion prior to. Ms. Golden? Excuse me, I apologize.
Mr. Manager, yes, it's allow, Ms. Golden?
I'm sorry, Manager, Mayor, and City Council. So the state law that was changed when the thousand-dollar fine went into effect, so the first offense is a thousand-dollar fine, and you can lose your tobacco products, it's not closing the store, you lose your tobacco products up to thirty days in the purview of the Board of Health. The second, the second offense is a two-thousand-dollar fine, and you can lose your products up to thirty days in the purview of the Board of Health. And we did have a public hearing on May tenth, that was open to everybody, it was in the paper for two, it was publicized twice. There was a whole bunch of store owners that came, none of them really spoke against it, some of them did speak against it. And some of them did speak a little bit and then left, they did not stay till the end of the public hearing. The first city solicitor was there for the whole public hearing. There were a lot of changes made to the regulations at that point in time. This was one of the regulation changes, I believe there were ten of them made at that point in time. But we will, I can bring back the recommendation, we can have it go to the city solicitor, we can bring back the regulation, and then we can bring it back to the Board of Health. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor, does this board have oversight on any of this? Can, can we make a change to any of this, or is this something that the Board of Health sets, and that's the way it works?
Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so under two seventy, chapter two seventy, section six, I think, that the Board of Health has sole authority on the sale of tobacco.
So I just move the motion. I would just move.
Move the motion. Considering that the manager's comment, Counselor Mercier, would you stand by your original motion to refer to the Board of Health, or would you request the manager to send a letter to reconsider?
Yes, I would like the manager to still send that letter, because I still believe it's double jeopardy, no matter which way you look at it, and I think that they could have amended it to be either one or the other, but not both.
Okay, so the maker of the motion, Counselor Mercier, amend her motion originally second by Counselor Rook, will you accept the amendment, Counselor Rook? So the motion now is Counselor Mercier request city manager to write a letter to the Board of Health to have a second consideration.
Yes.
With the Board of Health.
That's good.
That was seconded by Counselor Rook.
Thank you.
Before we take a vote, Counselor Leahy?
Sure, I just, I just want to add caution, because it should still go to the law office for review. The manager appoints the boards, we don't want any conflict in sending a letter to a board which people are appointed to, so it should still go to law office, just to make sure everything's out in the open, everything's clear. So just, I would suggest that, so keep that piece in, that it goes to law office for review.
Yeah, so I think that the best path, thank you for your comment, Counselor Leahy, that the best path may be per the council's motion to have the city manager write a letter to the Board of Health, to reconsider whatever the decision is, that will be referred to the law department for final review, to bring it back to the council for a vote.
Sure, as long as it still goes to law office, everybody's, yeah.
Right, it'll come back to us through, through the law department. Vote on the floor, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Leahy? Yes. Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for coming to speak, Mr. Patel. We now take, go back to on the agenda where we left off on the unfinished business section. We'll start with item four-point-one. We'll just wait about ten seconds for the movement in the chamber. Four-point-one, these are the motion responses, unfinished business. This is Counselor Gishia request city manager update the city council on the status of the computers in the police vehicles and precincts since the cyber attack, seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Gishia, and apologize, I mentioned motion respond, these are the old motions. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I, I believe that this is time-sensitive after speaking to multiple people, and, and they tell us that through you to either the manager or if the chief is still here, I just have a couple of questions to the superintendent or to the manager, whoever would be here.
Counselor Gishia, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Superintendent Houdon, could, could you give us the status on the computers in the patrol cars in all the police vehicles currently?
So I would actually defer to MIS for the technical explanation of what's going on. Needless to say, I don't, it has something to do with the modems and security that they're not operational in the cruisers, our precincts are up and running.
Does that concern you?
Uh, to a degree, yeah.
It concerns your offices, really?
It deals more with efficiency, they're still able to conduct a lot of their business, they're not able to do some of the stuff that they would normally do in a cruiser, they do have to go back to the precincts.
I don't know where the MS, MIS person just went to, but it concerns your offices. And, and when, when it's brought to our attention, it concerns them a lot, because currently there's a lot of deficiencies in it, like, could you outline if a report needs to be written from South Lowell, where would an officer have to go to write that report?
They could go to the main station, they could go to one of the precincts.
So when that happens, who covers South Lowell?
The area cars that are adjacent to that cars route.
So that leaves a deficiency in your operation, because somebody's coming over, and if they get called on their way to the station, there's, there's an issue, do they run back to that, to their sector?
If the, could you repeat the question?
So, so say they're at the main station, and they're waiting to put the information in, and something happens in their sector, do they get back to their car and go immediately?
No, the other cars will cover, and, and, let me give you an example. Say an officer makes an OUIR S, there's certain protocols and steps that need to be taken where the officer may have to come off the street, that happens routinely in patrol operations. There are redundancies, we have area cars that can cover the route while they're tied up.
So you, you were at the same meeting we were at, and I'm just trying to get this, because I think three weeks ago, and then the report back would have been much easier than now, and, and it was, it's very time-sensitive for a lot. It's been five months that MIS has had this problem. And to me, the problem is extremely important to the safety of police officers. They can't run people's past on computers anymore, they have to run back to a sec, to a station that's outside of their sector, leaving it empty, so if the nearest two sectors have a call, now they have to make a decision whether they're going to run over, or someone from a further away sector is going to go to that. So there's just deficiencies, and you were at the same meeting I was at, when South Lowell was saying, I mean, back Central Street, excuse me, was saying how they felt as though they weren't being manned at this time because of Jerry's Food Store and the issues down there, and then you look at other areas, and for me, this is extremely important for our officers to have this in their vehicle, because we take Rogers, the, the car wash down there, they run a report, they have to come back, and then by the time they get back, people are already back at the car wash. And they could do it in their cruiser at that point. And for five months, Mr. Manager, this is something that MIS has to get it together. This is imperative, we're putting people's safety in jeopardy in our community, we're down thirty-six police officers, we're taking people running a different way, and this is, your office is telling me this. And, and I know that your, your hands are tied, you have to go with the stuff that you hear, but we get into these conversations, and, and I just think that, right now, do we offer people overtime to be a backup because of this issue? Do we feel like we had second cars at one time? So now that this issue is here, and we take somebody out, do we offer police officers overtime from another shift to cover, so if someone's out of their area, they can get over there and cover? Or do we just do it the way?
Depending on the night of the day, I have additional officers assigned that I pay with either overtime or staffing grant or other means.
So at, at the end of their shift, when they come in and say they're at the end of their shift and they have to write a report?
Mm-hmm. They're paid overtime.
Okay, so it's costing the city even more money, because the reports aren't in their cruiser at the time when they need it, so it costs the city time one way or the other. And if they get to a precinct, say someone goes to Centerville Precinct, and someone's already using the computer, does the officer just sit there and wait for the other one to finish their report?
There's plenty of computers, either at the station or at the precinct, if there's not a, a computer available that there, somebody is using it, they can find another.
So that's not what they're saying. They're saying they're waiting behind. So, I mean, again, you're the leader of this operation, and we're looking at the MIS, and MIS is holding you up, I'm, I'm here to support you guys, and we needed to get together, we never had this problem, and Craig was down there, and you had your own division out of it, and, and maybe that's not the way the computer system goes, but we hadn't, we put priorities in place in the city, and I would think that the cruiser's main computers should be up and running, and it shouldn't take five months. Because it was April we had the cyber attack, right? Is that how long they've been down, since April? So for five months, we've been less efficient, I, I just can't wait to see this report and all the jogging that's going to go in it, but at the end of the day, we sit here, we have neighborhoods that are complaining of stuff, and we're waiting, and, and I understand, Chief, you must be as frustrated, more frustrated than I am, and I know you can't say it, I get it, but at the end of the day, it comes down to, we're not efficient right now, as as, as efficient as we can be in public safety. And I'll, I'll wait for the report.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Chief, for being here. All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is passed. The next motion, under unfinished business deals, four-point-two, Counselor Rook request city manager contact the state delegation and Mass DOT concerning landscaping along Riverside Street, Vonnham Avenue, and Batucket Boulevard, Route one thirteen highway, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion was filed three weeks ago, and since then, it's all been cleared, all the way up and down, one thirteen W Highway, so thank you to DPW Department, and I saw State Representative Elliott last night, thanked him as well for, for assistance from DOT, everything looks great, and, you know, in the future, if he moves it on a schedule a couple times a year, that'd be even better, but as of right now, everything looks fantastic. Thank you. No need for a report, come back either. Thank you.
So you don't need to report anymore, Counselor Rook, motion is withdrawn. The next motion is four-point-three, Counselor Rook, Counselor Yem, request city manager look into free parking for veterans with noted indicator on vehicle license plate. Who would like to go first, Counselor Rook, Counselor Yem? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one small token of appreciation that the city can do for our veterans. A lot of them has a veteran's plates on it already, so our motion is that to allow them to park for free within the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, this came from a, a veteran, retired veteran, obviously, that, you know, in his, on eighty years old, that, that spoke of, you know, looking around, trying to be able to find a parking spot very close to where he wants to go, you know, and got into a broader conversation about, you know, all our veterans that have, that have served. You know, most of our veterans, they have the decal on their license plate already, so that's hopefully be easy for our parking attendants to, to know what's, you know, a veteran vehicle or not. I think they say we don't have to give out any special decals or tags, anything like that. You know, our veterans have a license plate that has the, the seal on it, so if that's something that can be worked out, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Both counselors, good motion. I know Counselor Mercier and I, we filed similar motion in the past, and I think we're still waiting for the report as well, so maybe combine the motion response, Mr. Manager, the motion related to free parking and veterans, that we should be getting pretty soon. Counselor Mercier, do you have something to add?
No, I'm glad you said that, because I said that motion sounds familiar, but we did make it, didn't we? Similar to that, sure, thank you.
All, all the counselors, as indicated, we have a lot of concerns and care for our veterans. All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. The next motion is four-point-four, Counselor Scott, request city manager provide a report form appropriate department regarding improvements that can be made to improve flooding issues around South Lowell, seconded by Counselor Juness. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there's flooding that's happened all over the city, and, and that we, we have unprecedented rainfall, so I'm certainly not asking about areas that are, you know, that have been hit because of that, but we have some areas, like the intersection of Moore Street, that is a continuous headache for residents in that area. It happens on years that there isn't unprecedented rainfall, I didn't know if there's something that we can look at, I don't, I really don't know what the options are, but it, it's just, it's a real issue. The other two areas you've actually already addressed, well, one, one of the areas you have, the Eighty Way area, that you've dredged the area further and, and expanded the retention pond, and the other area that I'm asked about continuously right now is the flooding that's coming from the cemetery, which I have on a separate motion, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, just quickly, I have a similar motion tonight down the line, but this is a, an issue that we have to address, you know, it's almost in the priority as if, how we would look at it, you know, when, when it snows, all hands are on deck for snow removal, and we've had so much rain lately and issues that there are multiple things we should be addressing, there's sides of roads that are washed out, we, we have to figure out a plan, and it's our property, and it has to be filled back in with, with dirt or whatever, berms that are coming up, we have to get a list of streets that, that need some berms to redirect the water, so there's a whole host of issues with this weather we've been having this summer, and it's something that the council needs to address quickly and put some priorities in place. So this is a start with this. So this is a start with this type of a motion, with other motions that we've all filed. But you know, the issues that are going on in Leamster right now, dramatic. So we don't want to get to that point. But we need to prepare and make sure that, you know, if we have any flash flooding, what else can be done, you know? So I'm sure the administration is looking at that right now, just in case. But there are smaller issues that are affecting our citizens that, you know, we need to address, filling in the washed out areas along sidewalks, homes. And if we can add berms that would redirect water, things like that. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.5. Councilor Scott, request city manager work with appropriate department to develop regulations around health and clearliness of feeding programs for the homeless, for the homeless. Second by Councilor Nguyen. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually already have a response to the motion from, from our Health and Human Services Department. But, and it's an excellent response. So I made the motion because there were concerns. We don't want to make it, you know, overly burdensome to allow feeding programs to, to happen. But we definitely need to have policies around food safety, food handling, and definitely around trash removal, once they're done feeding people. We, we've seen in different neighborhoods, you know, up to 30, 40 styrofoam containers just dropped off at the end of the street. And then they're just left there and they end up in the river or the brook or whatever. If you're going to, to do the programs, then you're going to have to have a way to clean up afterwards. So I think this is a very good response. I would make a motion, I guess, for us to adopt the guidelines that were recommended by our Health and Human Services Department. And I would make that in the form of a motion.
Motion by Councilor Scott to accept the report. Second by Councilor Nguyen. Any discussion, Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. In the motion response, again, I echo what my colleague said. I, I think it's great that our health department's looking at this and proposing a solution to kind of regulate this. But what do we do with, so if we're going to require registration of organizations and, and put some kind of guidelines around it, what about those that, that do not, or choose not to follow these regulations once they implement it? What would we be doing to enforce that?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council, this is something, Council, we could continue to look at. But many of these organizations are, are consistently asking for our assistance with financial, by financial means. So maybe through the grant process, we can, we can suggest that they would do it in this manner. I think it's something that Ms. Golden and I have talked about. And it's something we could continue to work on to see if, if this indeed can happen. But I do understand what you're saying. If two organizations decide yes, well, I would think that all organizations are going to say yes because of the grant, the grant opportunities we, we present them. It may, it may also go another way, as, as you can imagine.
Excellent, yeah. I, I think that's great. So I mean, I'll second my colleague's motion to, to move to implement. And it'd be greatly appreciated if, if you can continue the conversations and kind of dial in some of the what-ifs that come along with this. Thank you.
That was seconded by Councilor Nguyen already, Councilor. But we will take the vote. You have the motion by Councilor Scott to adopt the recommendation. Second by Councilor Nguyen. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to see us putting some structure around this too. But I do have some questions around it. Mainly, what are other cities doing? Are other cities, have other cities implemented something like this? Have they been successful with it? What kind of impacts have, have they had? I'm just curious what's been done in other communities. And additionally, I, I'm wondering if we might be able to get a report back in three, six months, just to understand how this has been received by the community and what, you know, what kind of changes we've seen, just to understand the impact.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, I believe, I believe we could do that. I mean, we're in the beginning stages of developing the regulation to find out how this could happen. And one thing, going back to what Council Robinson was discussing, is possibly we could put in some of our grant opportunities. It could be ARPA, but it's more than likely CBG monies. But this is something that I do see us implementing in the next, you know, two to three months. And then trying to figure out with the, with feedback from the community that actually does this to find out how they would like to see it done as well. I think there's, there's plenty of people that are working in the same space that want to see this to become, they want to see this to be successful as well. So that's something that we could absolutely look at with the development of the regulations that, that we're, we don't have the regulations yet. But that's something we could work on to make sure that everybody has the, the buy-in or the, or the same ideas.
Okay, great. I just, I don't want to see, you know, some of these organizations operate in multiple cities and towns. And I don't want, I just don't want to make people jump through a different set of hoops than they're already jumping through. You know, it's kind of, the more unified approach we can have, the better. You know, I understand the challenges around what we're seeing in the neighborhoods and we definitely got to get better. And obviously, it's, it's going to be more achievable if, if there's a give and take here and, and you know, we can all kind of pitch in and understand where we're going. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Quickly, I just want to say, I think this is great. And I appreciate the effort that was made for the report. And again, you know, we, we don't want to make people jump through hoops. But on the same token, it has to be safe. So there's a lot of things that I've learned from my wife that, you know, you can't cross-contaminate and you got to make sure everything's properly cooked and all that. So, you know, it's a great thing to feed, but you have to make sure you do it safely too. And this covers all bases and helps everybody out in the end. So, thank you.
No other comments. Motion on the floor by Councilor Scott, second by Councilor Nguyen to adopt the recommendation. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.6. Councilor Scott, request city manager provide a plan and timeline for replacing the drain line under Lauren Street from the cemetery. Second by Councilor Gishia. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a frequent question that I've been asked recently, is twice today, I've been asked about this. The water obviously is just flowing across the street. It was pretty heavy flowing today. I, I know that you're working on it. You've told me this work happening. But my concern right now is that the road is really getting damaged. There's a lot of potholes around there. The road's kind of crumbling, the sidewalk's crumbling where the water's flowing. So if we could just get a report and hopefully this is something that's happening pretty quickly. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, meetings are continuing with that. We're going in the correct direction. So I hope to have something sooner rather than later on an, on an actual solution.
Any other comments or questions?
No, you just might have to do some road repairs in the meantime. So, thank you.
On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.7. Councilor Janess, Councilor Scott, request city manager have the proper department report on traffic safety improvement options and implementation plan for the intersection of Elm and Chapel Streets to combat the recent rise in traffic accidents at this location. Who would like to go first? Councilor Janess or Scott? Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. This is something that the neighbors in that, right, right around that intersection have reached out to me about several times. There are a bunch of kids in the neighborhood and there's concern for the, for the kids' safety. There are frequently accidents at this intersection. I've noticed myself that if you're driving south on Chapel Street, when you get to this intersection, it is extremely blind, trying to see what's coming at you from the left on Elm Street. Right now, it's a two-way stop. You stop on Chapel Street and Elm is free-flowing. And it's, it's been causing some issues. So whatever we can do to make this safer for the folks in the, in the neighborhood is good. Like I said, I hear about this intersection constantly. So whatever we can do quickly would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thanks. I would just echo my colleague's sentiment about hearing about this intersection. What the residents want is stop signs, obviously on Elm Street as well as Central. It is difficult to pull out of there. The cars drive really fast down Central. So that's just something to look at. I, I know the traffic engineer can look at the accident reports and see that there's been some pretty good activity there. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.8. Councilor Janess, Councilor Gishia, request city manager have the proper department explore the possibility of developing a program to partner with local artists to utilize utility boxes on city property around the city as locations for public art, as is done in other communities. Who would like to go first? Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion came about because Councilor Gishia posted on Facebook some amazing work that was done by some of the students out at the, out of the Volk on one of the boxes on their property. Looks great. And it's something I've seen in other communities. I've seen it in Tewksbury, I've seen it in Bedford. I've seen it really all around, in many, many communities. Reading is another one. And it really can provide an opportunity to really improve a neighborhood, take away an opportunity for, for tagging, which, you know, we see quite a bit here. So maybe if there's a painted surface, it might deter some of that. And it gives an opportunity for, for Lowell, where it's such an art-centric city, to really partner with, with the artists we have here, whether they're students or whether they're, you know, adults who live here. I think there's a lot of people who might be interested in doing something like this. And I know it's something that the city has looked at in the past. Back, back when Giovanni was, you know, a baby planner, I know there was a, there was something along these lines over at the Route 38 project, kind of threw that up in the air. So this might be an opportunity to revisit some of the lessons learned from there, kind of dust that off and, and see what we can do to really engage the, the community and try to beautify Lowell as best we can. Thank you.
Councilor Gishia, all, all said. No other comments? On the favor say aye, opposed say no. Councilor Leahy, you beat me to the punch.
Very quickly, no. I just, this is a great motion and I'd like to see it sped up. We've been talking about this for a number of years. So, you know, let's get out there and get these artists working. Let's find the money through the CBD grants or whatever we can and, and get them going. So I would request over at the Lincoln School, that box over there be painted second. So, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. That motion is passed. The next motion is 4.9. Councilor Janess, request city manager have the proper department develop and implement an outreach and education campaign to address bicycles being ridden on city sidewalks. Second by Councilor Nguyen. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand the, since I filed this motion a while ago at this point, LPD has done some education and even enforcement of some of the bicycling regulations that exist within the city. And, you know, I, this came to me from a concerned resident who felt like they were getting buzzed by bicycles on sidewalks downtown all the time. So, you know, whatever we can do to, to kind of get the word out there that people shouldn't be riding their bikes on sidewalks. I understand that our infrastructure is a challenge. We don't have bike lanes for people to be riding in. That's a whole other discussion. And maybe someday we can revisit that and see what we can do there. But really, this is just for the safety of the pedestrians throughout the city. People don't, don't want to get hit, don't want their kids to get hit, don't want their pets to get hit when they're walking on the sidewalk like they should be. So whatever we can do to, to make sure that we can, we can disseminate that knowledge, the better. Whether that's working with the schools or, or what, I'm not sure. But something we need to figure out. Thank you.
No other comments? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.11. Councilor Janess, request city manager provide detailed report address permit issue date, permit close date, hers rating on residential building permits issued since January 1st, 2023, including those issued in accordance with these stretch regulations. Second by Councilor Drinkwater. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just really curious that, you know, what impact these new regulations have, have had on our ability to produce housing and efficient housing. Lowell adopted the stretch goal of this regulation back in 2011, I think it was. And since then, the state has now kind of tightened up what those stretch goals really look like. And so things have changed and the landscape has changed. And I want to understand where we're at and what impact it's having on our, on our building within the city. Thank you.
No other comments? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. I skip motion 4.10. It's also a motion by Councilor Janess. Request city manager have the proper department develop and implement signage along the Riverwalk, noting prohibitions of motorized vehicles. Second by Councilor Yam. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion speaks for itself.
Excellent. Good job, Councilor Janess. No other comments? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion, we now go to 4.12. Councilor Janess, request city manager provide update on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Extension Project. Second by Councilor Rook. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something a constituent brought to me as well. I know it's been something that the city was working on for a while and the project seems to have stalled. So we're just kind of worry, wondering what the status is, what the next steps are and what we can do to push this along and finish it off. Thank you.
No other comments? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.13. Council Robinson, Councilor Scott, request city manager have the proper department provide the council with a report on what options we have to regulate harm reduction services in our community. Who would like to go first? Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. This is similar to kind of like the food thing. I've looked into some regulations other communities have implemented with this. And I think we have a lot of options on the table. From what I can gather, there is a process that's going to be involved. Some of the things that I've seen other communities do around this syringe exchange programming within the, the local community. Again, the state has allowed it, but host health departments, if that community can adjust accordingly for that community. I've seen some examples in other communities where the syringes that are handed out are traceable. So you know what organizations handing them out. If you start finding a lot, you can kind of go back and have discussions as to what's going on. Other things I've seen is different number exchanges. Whether it's five for five, five dirty for five clean, one dirty for one clean. It, it allows us to, to put some kind of guidelines in place. Because it, it seems like we have some instances in the community where we're finding hundreds and hundreds. And, and it's not a simple measure of, oh, there's no shops containers. It's, it's again, we've had this discussion a million times on the floor. People that are, that are using substance abuse or abusing substances through syringes, chances are they're not going to be in the right frame of mind to put that used syringe or, or vehicle into the proper container. So I think we owe it to the public, we owe it to the community to try to look at how we can regulate it. From what little I can gather is our Board of Health comes up with recommendations. We, we have the conversation on the council floor. We figure out what's going to fit our community. And I believe it has to be a piece that we would have to write to the state. The heads of, I believe, both sides would have to agree and move, move a piece of legislation forward in order to give us the power to do what we felt was a tailor-made regulation for our community. So again, I just think that with the sheer volume of, you discarded syringes we're finding in the community. we're finding in the community, I think something has to be done, and I look forward to hearing from our health department and all those involved as to how we can kind of regulate what we've been doing for quite some time. Thank you.
Any comments, Counselor Scott?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just real, Counsel Robinson hit pretty much everything, but I would just echo the sentiments that we're finding hundreds of syringes all over the place, piles of them. It's dangerous for children. It's dangerous. It's bad for the environment. I mean, we're seeing them in our rivers, our waterways, and the same with the feeding program with the styrofoam containers. So if there's any way we can just look at some creative ideas perhaps that we can try to place policies that we ask the nonprofits to follow, it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Robinson?
One thing I'd like to be clear on this motion, though. Again, we are going to need, so maybe it's a matter of the health department working with the solicitor's office, because there is going to be, we're going to need a description of the pathway forward to, if there is something that this council adopts, to address it and get it changed on the state level. So appreciate that. Thank you.
No other comments? On favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.14. Counsel Robinson requests city manager explore the creation of a voluntary DPW Public Health Department Syringe Response Team to enhance current city efforts, second by Counselor Mercia. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. This is something that was hashed out with the union in the past. We put a lot of efforts into a proposal like this. The City of Boston DPW has implemented something similar, and basically, the base of this idea is we can't afford to go out and hire a dozen or so employees that are just going to run around and collect syringes. It's not feasible, and realistically, it would be very expensive. This is something that we can look to expand duties within our existing organization, offer a stipend on a voluntary basis, and get people trained that are okay or interested in taking on this additional duty. Get them trained, get them immunized, provide them all the materials they need. So some of the syringe collection stuff for our frontline people that are out in the parks, cutting grass, weed whacking, doing whatever they do, our irrigation specialists that are finding syringes in their control valve boxes, we get these people that are willing to step up and do this in their routine course of the day, and it's not too much of an additional burden on the city's finances, as well as it supplements the health department's efforts when we get into areas that are just riddled with discarded syringes. So I think this is kind of enhancing what we're already doing and offering an opportunity to others that are willing to step up and help us to really pick up the volume that we need. Thank you.
Through you to Manager Golden. This sounds really good, but as we look, I just see a DPW that's extremely taxed with the stuff in front of them, with all the homeless stuff, picking up the trash and trying to get everything else done, our parks and potholes and everything. Do you think that this is something that would find time during the day to be able to do?
Mr. Manager?
If they're not already at the location?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. It's definitely something we would have to talk to the union about to see if it's something that they're interested in. I've talked to Counsel Robinson about this particular piece, but the mentality of the last two motions of an all-hands-on-deck to try to make sure that people are appropriately compensated, one, but more importantly, educated on how to do this. That could be a purpose if possible. Could they do it? I think they could, because a lot of our employees are out there. They're seeing what is happening, taking anyone from parks. They're already there picking things up. So I think the educational piece to it, as well as the educational piece, number one, and maybe a stipend could be entertained. That would be my opinion, because they're already quote-unquote "on site" as opposed to them having a call, our specialist to come over and pick it up.
I guess my caution to everything is that this department keeps getting taxed with everything. And right now, Hadley Park was awful the other day. You know, they mowed it, and it looked like it was Shaw Farm after they cut the grass. You look at some of the potholes that are out there, they're reoccurring all the time, and I'm just wondering, how do we, at some point, we're taxed, and we either need to support more or we have to figure out where we're going, because we're stretching people to a limit where now, and I don't disagree with the motion that Counsel Robinson has before me at all. I'm just saying, I don't know how we're going to find all of this time to do these things, because we're already doing the homeless stuff, which is taking away from the other stuff that monuments, as Counsel Yem always brings up, you know. There's so many things that we're not doing now, and now we're going to train people to go look for needles, that we should put the program in place, the exchange program, and try to hold people accountable who are giving out the needles and take the needles back. If they're not there, then we need to figure out another way that way rather than just pick up. But, thank you.
Counsel Robinson, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, thank you. So this would be, more or less, 90% of this work, the way that we presented this in the past was, 90% of this work would just be normal, routine, course of the day duties. So if I have 15 stops of green space that I'm responsible for going out cleaning up the debris and litter, weed whacking, cutting, I'm there. When I find syringes, again, we have one, I think we're going to have a second syringe officer on the books. So instead of me having to tie them up to come out and grab one or two individual syringes that's in the parks that I'm responsible for weekly, I'll be trained, I'm immunized, I have the proper equipment, I have the shops container in my vehicle. It's grab and go, done. It just goes with your normal routine. And then when we do get, on a, say, a Saturday, for example, when we're doing a large-scale cleanout, we're not putting people in harm's way. The people that are going into these areas are immunized, they're trained, and they're comfortable because they volunteered to accept this designation. And it's not something that we're forcing people that might not be too, you know, comfortable handling this kind of stuff. So I think it's just looking at protecting people that are doing something already and giving them the tools they need to succeed in an area where it's kind of been gray for quite some time. And I think we can all agree that the need is there. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a program out there that gives free needles. Really? Is there? Yes. So I don't know why they can't say, "We'll give you a free needle, but you got to return one before we give you one free." Therefore, in order to get something, they'll be the very ones picking it up just so they can get a free needle. Why can't we implement something like that? Let the very users that are throwing them all around be the ones that are picking them up now, because they won't get a free needle that's clean unless they return one that's dirty, and let them dispose of it in a box where they're going to give out the free needle. Why can't we do that? I don't know.
Counselor, would you like to come back and report with that, provide a report, or?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That is something we could look at. There's been a couple of good ideas in regards to, once again, having some of our department folks that are already out there on the road, if you would, having the appropriate education, and if they're comfortable picking that up, but also an opportunity for the voluntary exchange. As everyone knows, the Comaltha, Massachusetts has allowed that to happen, free needles. But if there are ways that we can do some type of exchange, I think that's something we could go back and forth. I know that Mara, Lisa, we've been talking about something like this, and it's really been pushed by some of the discussions here, by the motions by this council. So we will get your report back with some of these great ideas and see what we can move forward on.
Clearly appreciated. And another thing with that is other communities have one designated, say, organization that does the exchange as opposed to several smaller organizations that it's, I think it's more challenging to track and kind of monitor the regulations of the exchange program when you have multiple organizations distributing them, as opposed to one point of contact. Now it's kind of easier to key in on that.
No other comments or questions? On favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is number 4.15. Counsel Robinson requests city manager explore the feasibility of creating a part of soft money aimed at attracting an increase of housing production, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Again, this is something that we've seen other communities. Houston, Texas has done this in the past, and they've utilized funding that they had available, and they designated an account, and it would help to buy down, say, interest rates for development projects. It could help to potentially buy properties that come to market from, in the instance, like, you know, whether it's the Archdiocese or another organization, the state. It allows that community the opportunity to have some money that's flexible, but it's earmarked for housing creation, kind of like we've seen tiffs in the past with parking garages. Well, I mean, I think that's a thing of the past in this city, but I think if we look at potentially, is there a way to entice developers to come in? And again, I go back to, I like how Boston's doing it. They create a RFP with a concept model of what that community's looking for, for a building that would, say, have 40 to 60 units, different income levels from 60 to 120 AMI. What is that carrot that we're going to need to hang out front to bring developers this direction? And I think that's what this motion is geared at. So I'd love to see what you and your team could put together for suggestions. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. On the favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is item 4.16. Counsel Robinson requests city manager have transportation engineer examine Grandview and 13 Streets to prioritize corrective measures if possible, second by Counselor Janess. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. On favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. Counselor Yem, did you have your hands up?
Yes, sir. May I take, may I take motion 7.3 and 7.5 out of order? So it need to be voted on tonight. My fear is that we may run out of time, so these two items is critical too, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. What number again, Counselor?
Suspend the rule, take out 7.3 and 7.5.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Yem to bundle 7.3 and 7.5, take them out of order. To suspend the rule, take them out of order, and bundle these two motions, items together, second by Counselor Rook. Item 7.3 is to vote license agreement with D.C.A.M. on Hurd Street, and 7.5 is to vote license agreement with Kiwanis Club of Greater Lowell. Any comments or questions, any of the counselors? Hearing none, the motion to, need a motion to adopt and accept for these two items. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. Yeah, without a motion? Motion by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Rook again. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
11 years.
All right. We were actually going pretty smooth without jumping around too much. Let's go back to where we left off. Item 4.7, 4.17. Motion by Counsel Robinson requests city manager provide the council with a detailed report on Lowell's allocations and commitments from the Attorney General's statewide opioid settlement funding program, second by Counselor Mercia. Counsel Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. No comments? On favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. The next item is motion 4.18. Counselor Noonan requests city manager have homelessness coordinator report on lessons learned and next steps proposed from the summit, second by Counselor Rook. Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approximately a month ago, the City of Lowell and Limco hosts a meeting on homelessness. I know that a lot was learned from that meeting, so I just want to know, you know, just want to report on that, you know, what is the next step and what we're going to do with what we learned, and maybe a report on that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
No other comments? On favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.19. Counselor Noonan requests city manager provide an update on where Gordon Road is on the repaving list, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Noonan?
Mr. Mayor, the motion speak for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. On...
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Robinson?
I get a lot of these questions myself. I'm sure all my colleagues do. Is there a way that the council could just get a copy of the paving list so we all are familiar with it, maybe email to us? I put that in the form of a motion I have to. If you could shoot us all a copy of the paving list, so then constituents ask us, at least we're familiar with it. Thank you.
That's a great comment. Mr. Manager, would that be possible? Thank you, Mr. Manager. That motion was passed, 4.19. The next motion is 4.20. Counselor Noonan, Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager work with DEI officer to clearly define the role and goals of the new position, look at city hiring practices with DEI lens, assure DEI education and awareness are brought to all employee in all departments, and assess DEI work in other cities and towns and adopt a appropriate for Lowell. Who would like to go first? Counselor Noonan or Counselor Drinkwater?
I'm all set. If Counselor Drinkwater want to add to it, I think it's just clear enough what I'm looking for.
Agree that the motion speaks for itself.
That's a two-for-one. Thank you, both counselors. Item 4.21, motion, Counsel Leahy requests city manager have law department provide an opinion regarding as to why an elected official cannot receive their stipend if they work for a local municipality review. Counsel Leahy?
Mr. Mayor, before you, I just want to abstain from this discussion. Be recorded as abstaining from this discussion.
It is noted, Counsel Gitcher by Mr. Clerk, second by Counselor Robinson. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I think maybe I should have put work for regional municipality, but nevertheless, if we could just get another opinion from the law department, because really, I don't understand why if somebody runs for a school seat and they work for a city position, why they shouldn't be able to get a stipend for the work that they put in. I can understand the voting conflict maybe, but the work's being done, you know, and I understand that it wouldn't be, you know, a city position for an elected city position, but if they cross over, I really don't understand. So if we get that report and opinion from the law department, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
No other comments? Counsel Scott?
Just one quick question, I guess, just so I understand it. Aren't you able to take a vote to pay somebody, like, in their position if you wanted to as a council? So I just, just curious about that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I think what Counselor Scott is talking about is a 268A. And a 268A, if you're a school teacher and then you want to become a coach after school, you can't hold two positions and get paid for them, but you can if you give an exemption of a 268A as long as those two positions don't happen at the exact same time. And I don't think his position happens at the same time, and I don't see the conflict there, because we're not, well, I don't know. I just think it's worth a shot to investigate it again.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. There is a special designation that the council is referring to for coaches and things of that nature, but my suggestion would be we'll have legal look at this particular piece. Once again, we'll reach out to State Ethics to make sure that their ruling is. I look at this myself a little differently, but State Ethics is going to rule the day on this particular piece. So if I could just maybe further request, if it's okay, actually, I can't do that, but I would like to maybe lay out how the special employees are paid and those who cannot be paid. Having gone through this previously, I do know a little bit about it, but I would like the, our legal department to look at it and maybe reach out to State Ethics with the rundown of who can and who cannot, and for what reason.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Solicitor, would you like to add on anything or do the report?
Just very quickly, there's another state statute. It's Chapter 39, Section 6A, that governs in the same realm. And, you know, I'll provide all of this in a report, but it does specifically state that, you know, mayor, city councilor, they can be paid for their services, obviously, per the ordinance, but they can receive no other such compensation through the state, spelled out in the statute. But again, I can provide all of that in the report.
So just so, just to clear this...
Counsel Scott, you have something else to add?
Sorry, thank you. And just so we understand too, like, it doesn't matter that it's a regional school, because I know, like, charter schools are sanctioned by the state, so you could be on a board and get paid as a charter school employee. Does that not apply for a regional school district? Is that, is that because the salary comes through the city? Is that what the issue is?
Yes, exactly right. Like, the funding source being the city, I think is the critical part of the analysis there.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Sure. And this isn't specific to any person or position or whatever, but through my time here in the city, my first experience was with Officer Golden, Sergeant Golden, you know, served the city as a police officer, and he's doing a great job. And he was on school committee, and I didn't see what the conflict was, you know, and same thing down the line. So that's what I'm just looking for. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On the favors, I oppose, say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 4.22. It's a motion by... by myself, request city manager have proper department investigate having more lighting in Cambodia Town. Second by Councilor Leahy. I heard you loud and clear. Just quickly, it gets a lot darker now, but that area is still, is still pretty dark. Some of the lights are not working. I think it's best if to look that area, is to go at nighttime to see how dark it is, and people still out about shopping after the sun go down. No other, any other comments? Hearing none on the favor of the I oppose say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is also by myself, motion four point two three, request city manager have the proper department explore use of reduction tracks, speed bumps on Wade Street at the beginning of Powell Streets. Second by Councilor Noon. Wade Street is a very short street, but a lot of people use it as a cut through to get on a main street. It's between Powell and Chemsford Street, so you can see people just quickly go on the short street to make it to Chemsford Street. No other comments or questions on the favor of the I oppose say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. That completes the unfinished business. We already taken up the public hearing at seven o'clock. We now go through section six. These are the communication from city manager, and these are the motion responses. We'll start with the alphabet A, motion response, bookmobile launch update. Any comments or questions, Council Scott?
Oh, thank you. I'm just assuming that this vehicle is now up and running. It said it was on forty-five day tags, waiting for payment, but I'm, this is an excellent report. Thank you.
Would you like to speak on this matter? Yes, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, councilors, good evening. Steve Robe Show, Director of the Paul Memorial Library. So just to give a couple of quick updates in terms of the bookmobile. So, in terms of the bookmobile insurance and registration, once the invoice for the vehicle was received and fully paid for at the end of July, early August, that is when the library received the necessary vehicle title and full sales documentation it needed in order to insure and register the vehicle. So I received the certificate of ownership on August seventh, and then received the copy of the bill of sale on the fourteenth, and then also had the odometer and everything, and signature receipt and everything prior to that. Since then, I've been working with the city manager's office and Clark Insurance to finalize the paperwork for a necessary insurance and vehicle registration. Been working with Anthony Valandry and Allison Gould over at Clark Insurance, both to insure and register the vehicle. The initial insurance is going to just cover the bookmobile and not the contents contained. And Anthony and Allison are also going to be providing a separate quote for insurance plan for the contents of the vehicle, including items such as the books, as well as all the technology that will be there. So as of September seventh, there was an error that was encountered with some of the vehicle registration paperwork, so that got sort of glitched, but this error has since been revised, and the paperwork is going to be resubmitted sometime this week for the registration and insurance. In terms of the bookmobile positions, so all of those were posted from July twentieth until August tenth. At the close of each of the three bookmobile positions, we had a total of sixty applicants for all three positions. For bookmobile librarian, we had fifteen applicants. We interviewed three. Bookmobile library assistant, we had thirty-two applicants. We interviewed five. And for the part-time bookmobile library aide, we had thirteen applicants. We invited four individuals to interview. Only two accepted the invitation. So at this point, the interviews for all three positions were conducted from August twenty-nine to September seventh. The reference checks were performed on September eighth, and then the names of candidates that we would like to go forward with were provided to Human Relations yesterday. So we're hoping to have those positions filled very soon, hopefully by the end of October, so we can get those people on boarded, and we can get the bookmobile out into the community.
Wow, thank you. That's great news. That's awful exciting about the number of applicants that applied as well.
Yes, we were very happy to see the number of applicants that, that came forward for us, and also just the breadth of experience that a number of the applicants did have.
Excellent. So when, when do we think the bookmail, bookmobile will be out in the community? What is like our target right now?
Doing a, a, or being re, being real, probably later October to beginning of November. And that will get us into the neighborhoods, but then for the winter months, we'll be able to go not only into the, excuse me, to the neighborhoods, but also to a number of nonprofits in the area that we'll be partnering with, taking all the materials off of the bookmobile, bringing those in to the different areas.
So full programming by the spring, we're looking?
Yes, and, and the big, the big push is going to be by the spring, we will have some of the, some of the hits and some of the misses that happened during, you know, the late fall, winter months, but then also have a more solid base and foundation for what we want to do in the spring and the summer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through you to Manager Golden, and this is just a process. When I was reading this, I read that we took a vehicle without a title, without insurance, and without being paid. Is that the policy? Do, do we have a policy that we take on vehicles without having it paid for? There was no P.O. process? There was no title? There's no insurance on the vehicle? That, that's what it says. Is that, through you to CFO, is that the policy?
Mr. Manager, through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
There was certainly a P.O. for this, this vehicle, councillor.
Okay, because on here, it says it wasn't processed, so.
And then typically with new vehicles, once we take delivery, then we move forward with the insurance process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, if I can interject really quickly. So yeah, in terms of, and I wasn't there at the very beginning of the bookmobile purchasing process, but I can say that in talking with Farber Specialty Vehicles, it is their policy to not provide the certificate of ownership or anything until the actual invoice is paid in full.
Did, did we have the vehicle prior to that? Because it says here, the vehicle title and full seals documentation will be forwarded to the library once payment is made in full. So we had the vehicle before we even made full payment?
Correct. Correct. We received the vehicle on June twenty-second, and we did not have an invoice until about a week and a half after that, which then set in the process of the, of the payment.
Yes, and Council Getchy? No other comments on the bookmobile, mobile? Next item, thank you for being here. The next line item, motion response, alphabet B, plan for enforcement of chapter one seventy-six dash two housing code. Council Scott?
Thank you. This is so hard without my iPad, by the way. My iPad's down right now, but I can't, I don't know how you use paper packets, how we used to, but, so thank you for the response. I appreciate it. I did reach out to Devani about it a little bit. One of the areas that I was really looking for was section F in the housing standards that I don't feel that we're meeting, and I don't think that the motion really addresses my concerns there. In it, it says, in addition to the person registering their name for the rental permit, it says, in addition, the name and contact information of the person in charge shall be posted at the property on a printed placard adjacent to the main entrance to the building. I don't see that happening. There's been a lot of concerns with properties about who's in charge of them, who owns them. I've gone on the G.I.S. to try to find the owners of properties. Their names are not listed. They have a P.O. box for the address. They have an LLC that is, an LLC that you cannot find on the state website. So I think we definitely need to make improvements around this. Residents have the right to know who is running the property next to them at any point in time. Some way that they can find that out publicly needs to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, councillor, I'm glad you, you were able to fix the interpretation, because I didn't know and understand what you were, what you were meaning to this, so I came up with a member random. So me talking to the building commissioner earlier, earlier today, I asked him about interpretation for section F of the one ninety-seven point two code for the ordinance. He had told me that they go by an inspection based on section one ten point seven of the International Building Code, based on that criteria. So, but moving forward, that we will be requiring that all owners, three units or more, to list their name and phone numbers, or if they're LLC, just to list those or a business, so that we can contact them if we need to.
So would that be publicly posted on the property? I know some of the larger property management, you'll see, you know, Universal Property, whatever, they'll have the placard there, but some of the six families, like in Back Central, like I said, I've gone on trying to investigate who owns them, and you cannot figure it out for the, for the life of me. I couldn't. So is that a requirement for them to be posted on properties like that? Because from what I'm reading, it sounds like it is.
Yeah, so what we're going to do, we're going to, while we're doing our inspections, we'll go out and we'll make sure that we contact those owners of those properties. The inspectors have ways of getting that information, finding out who are the owners of the property.
Okay, so you're going to add that to the neighborhood walks that you're doing? Is that the plan?
Yes, that is, that is also a part of the neighborhood walks, where we went out and we done our inspections, and we cited landlords who did not put in their applications for rental inspections. So they were cited, so we got their information off of them.
Okay, but I'm saying the placard is what I'm asking specifically, that they're supposed to have. And then also the G.I.S. information, is that something that's, that's able to be updated with an actual owner's name, like versus a, a P.O. box and an LLC that doesn't seem to be able to be found? I mean, is that, I don't know.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Council, that's from the assessors, and it's done twice a year. So that is something that we can speak to the assessors office about that, but that is some, that's information that is given.
A person's name, or, you know, an actual person. Okay, thank you.
But I, to follow up on your question in regards to, Mr. DeJesus and I have spoken about making sure the placards are something that are visible, where people can understand that such and such a property management company, you know, P.O. box, whatever the case may be, but it must be a working number, so people can get, get a hold of them.
Correct. Yes, and Council Scott? Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hate to keep going back years and years ago, but I distinctly remember when Peter Richards, Eileen Donahue, and I, the three of us got elected at the same time. We had a major concern with the revamping of all the property in this city, and we created an ordinance, we, meaning the council at the time, created an ordinance that said every single piece of property in this city had to have a name, a phone number, where could you reach this person? For example, if this particular house on this street and the person owned it but didn't live in the, in this state, we had to have the, a phone number and address of where they lived out of the state, and they had to designate a person in, in the immediate area, whether it be Lowell or maybe they live in Chemsford, that if there's an immediate problem, that's the person we contact, not the owner, but who they designated to take responsibility for that property. It was an ordinance. Why do we have people say, and I know it's true, gee, we can't find out who owns that. Why is that? I don't understand why is that? This is an ordinance that was created all those years ago, and every property should have a, a, a person that's associated with the owner and someone designated in this immediate area. Why we don't, I don't know. But it's a law. Why do we make ordinances if we don't keep them? We don't follow through with it? I don't understand, but it's frustrating to hear that, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Council Yem?
Quickly, follow up along with my colleague, Kim Scott, on the G.I.S. In addition to the name, may we also have a phone number, as Council Mercier mentioned. If the house on fire, we look it up, we don't know who to call. The fire department may need to call somebody. Thank you.
Council Leahy?
Yes?
Council Getchy?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. DeJesus. Have we seen a rise of citations lately? Or is it just normal amounts getting written? Because it seems like we, maybe because it's district councillors, we get a lot more calls and, and concerns. So have we seen a rise in citations?
There has been a rise in citations, but the only, the only issue was that since Munis was down, we had a little trouble inserting them into Munis, but now we're all set with Munis, and we're inserting them now. So now they're going out for general bills as of right now, as we speak.
Okay, so, so we should see the delta go up in citations this next budget year?
Correct.
And, and do you, do you feel as though people are actually responding to what you guys are doing, or is it just repetitive, the same places over and over again? Because I personally think that departments should talk back and forth, because if you're like, say that Branch Street, you're going back and forth. Well, the fire department's going back and forth, the police department's going, everybody in the city's going back and forth. Isn't that something that's being communicated across departments, and is it something that, you know, we need to take stronger action earlier?
We are communicating with the police department. If there's any concerns with the property on Branch Street, we have been discussing with the police.
Okay, and I'm just talking in general, other properties, because there's other people who are complaining about the same thing is now growing in their areas, and I'll, I'll send you over.
For instance, like for Chapel Street, I talked to Deputy Chief Nury Braga, and he got some cameras out in that area as of last week sometime, I believe.
We're hearing on Ware Street, there's a problem.
Okay.
So, so, you know, Ware Street is one, and they say it's a housing authority building or whatever, but they're saying Ware Street, there's, there's major issues over there, and citations could be written. So I'm, I'm just, I'm leaving it to you guys, but now I just brought it up, so it's not leaving it to you guys. But if you could get over and look at Ware Street and see if, you know, what's going on in that area.
I'll, I'll make a note of it and let one of the inspectors go out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, any of the councilors on this motion response? Hearing none, we now go to the next motion response, alphabet C, Lowell High School solar update. Any comment, Council Getchy?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I just wanted to thank Catherine Moses for the report. I think it, it spells out everything, so if someone wants to read the report, they can see where we are. I'm thankful that we're in the process of, of getting the solar panels. I thank you, Mr. Manager and your staff.
No other comments. We'll now go to the next motion response, alphabet D, on Scott's decision tax title surplus. Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I want to thanks, I, the Mr. McKenna for the report. It's an excellent written report, so thank you so much. There's a similar pending case in Worcester, where homeowner, she pay off her home. She lived there for twenty-six years, and she worked hard, and in twenty eighteen, she fell ill. She was behind on the tax. So the city of Worcester sold the, sold the note to this company, Talaj, and this company also purchased a tax lien from the city of Lowell as well. So she owed twenty-six hundred on her tax bill, and they sold to this company, Talaj, for three thousand, three hundred and seventy. Talaj foreclosed it, and then moved to evict her, and the house worth more than three hundred thousand. So they, this company due to make a lot of profit from selling the home without sharing the equity with the homeowner. I, I would like to make a motion that, that the city council urging the city, asking the manager to send us a letter to support the House Bill number twenty-nine thirty-seven. I put a copy on my colleague's desk. And this House Bill is an act to relative to tax deed and protecting equity for homeowners facing foreclosure. So I know there's a lot of sponsor on this House Bill twenty-nine thirty-seven. None of those are from our state delegation, so I would like to have this letter sent to our state delegated, delegators to, to support this House Bill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the floor by Council Yem to have the manager send a letter to the state delegation supporting the House number...
Twenty-nine thirty-seven.
Mr. Clerk will have that in, in a motion write-up. Do we have a second? Second by Council Janess? Second by Council Janess, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. Any other comments on that motion response on SCADA's decision?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Musia?
Before we go any further, could I suspend the rules and do a 6.2 for the solar portfolio so that we could get Catherine? She just waited for her previous motion. Too bad we couldn't have taken them together. Could we just, I don't want to say get rid of her, but I'm sure she'd like to go home.
What, what item number, Councilor?
6.2, it's the informational report about solar portfolio.
Okay, motion, Council Musia, the entire thing is, there are three reports, you want to take all the reports up all at once, so we don't go back and forth?
Yes, that's good. Good idea, thank you.
Motion, motion by Councilor Musia to suspend the rule, take item 6.2 out of order. Second by Councilor Yem, 6.2, there are three informational reports, we'll go from the top down. The first one is the informational report on solar portfolio. Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to Ms. Moses.
Thank you so much, city councilors. Thank you, manager. Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to give you an update. I know that there's a real desire of this council to try and develop additional solar assets, and so I thought while we were updating you on the high school project, we'd go ahead and provide some updates on our additional solar portfolio. As the report states, according to the recommendation of the council, we move forward with power options to help us develop our solar portfolio. We have a number of projects where we are getting new roof structures or we have adequate roof structures in order to support the solar. A lot of those are MSBA projects. So those are kind of the first tranche of projects that are listed under the projects expected to have solar-ready roofs within the next year. There are six of those projects. We've already taken some of the backend steps to begin to develop this type of solar assets. You know, there are things like reserving your SmartBlock application, getting your interconnection agreements, doing basic site visits, assessing from an engineering perspective viability. So we have those sets of projects in the works. We also have an additional five projects where if we had a roof that's sufficient to have the solar systems, we can go ahead and develop those. And we're also, again, doing those backend kinds of things to help do that. The nice thing about those particular projects is there is a new grant program. They're putting $50 million to help upgrade your infrastructure in order to allow for clean energy development. That hasn't been released yet, but we're trying to put our projects together so that once that money is available, we will be very competitive in that application. And then there's also a set of projects, looking at our garages and looking at canopy structures for those, those take a little bit more engineering. But the hope is that by going through the different steps right now, within the next few years, we should be able to increase our behind-the-meter capacity around sixfold versus what we have installed right now. And over the lifespan of the projects, depending on where we end up in all of these things, it's going to save the city between 5.6 million and 7.9 million dollars on our utility costs. And so I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I also have a gentleman here from Select Energy, they're the solar vendor for power options. So John Demodica is their senior business development manager, and he can answer any more technical questions or happy to discuss this in any subcommittee later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would just need to ask a quick question, you know, what the lifespan of the, the solar panel? Because everything has a lifespan, so, thank you.
Correct. So the typical lifespan of a solar panel is somewhere between 20 and 25 years. And what will happen over time is you have what's called a degradation factor. So each year, it'll produce a little less and a little less. Of course, production is always dependent on your solar resource. You know, if your panels are hidden under 10 feet of snow like they were back in 2015, you're not going to get as much production. But there is a little bit of decrease in efficiency as they go along in the lifespan. But by starting these things now, we should have sufficient life, and the lifetime estimates include that degradation factor in it, so.
Just a follow-up questions, and I know you mentioned about the saving that the city would, would realize about 5.6 to about 8 million dollars. But the question also, how much would it cost? But you also mentioned about the, the grants that are coming. So are we doing it with or without the grants? Or we are just implementing the new solar panel only when we receive grants? Thank you.
That's an excellent question, and thank you for bringing up this distinction. So there are different ways that you can have financial benefits from solar panels. And we have a couple of those different examples across our portfolio right now in the city. You can own the panels yourself, and there's a higher upfront cost to that. You also have to deal with maintenance over the life of the system. That's something that we're looking into, and we should, as we get further along in the process and we get some of these types of incentives secured, we can get better numbers on those types of things. We also have what's called a power purchase agreement. And so with a power purchase agreement, a third party will actually own the system, and we pay them for the energy that is created by the system. We have those types of agreements for the solar panels that are on our existing schools at the Butler, Shaughnessy, Potucketville, and Riley School. And both of them will realize savings for you. With the power purchase agreement, one of the advantages of that is that you don't have to, you don't own them, so you're not responsible for the maintenance. And the developer who does own the panels has a financial incentive to make sure that they are getting their maximum production and staying up to date on the maintenance and things like that. But we're considering all the options, and we're happy to report back once we have some more solid numbers.
Awesome, thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Moses, from any counselor? Hearing none, thank you both for being here. The next item under the informational report is on ADU ordinance update. Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to the solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just, I wanted to provide some additional information for the council. Coming out of the special meeting that we had, I just thought it might be helpful to present the body with some additional information, and if that can assist in any way on moving forward, that, that was my, that was my goal here.
Any comments or questions from any of the councilors? Council Robinson?
So there still is an opportunity to home rule petition for the 30% alone?
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I missed the, the tail end.
Based on the report?
Yeah.
There is still an option to, for home rule petition, to request to do the 30% reduction, correct?
Yes, yep.
All right, thank you.
Council, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, through you, to City Manager, City Solicitor, for this very thorough report. And in looking at this, my takeaway is that the best way forward, and, and first off, I want to recognize that this council expressed through a majority vote that they wish to see a, you know, the 70% cap of fair market rent on accessory dwelling units. And while I did have some concerns about that, I really want to respect the, the will of the body. I do have concerns about moving forward with an ordinance that includes the restriction without either of the, I guess you'll say, safeguards in either Chapter 40P or the, the home rule petition that essentially allows that. So I would make the suggestion that we do move forward with a home rule petition that, that mirrors Salem. I won't go too deep into it, but I think there's a, I have a lot of concerns about adopting Chapter 40P for a number of the, the reasons listed in, in this report. And I again thank the, the solicitor for explaining all that. But I would suggest that we do move forward with a home rule petition that, that mirrors Salem. But in order to protect ourselves against any sort of legal challenge on including a, the 70% restriction that if enforced prior to a home rule petition passing could result in a challenge, I would suggest that we add a line into Section 3, Subsection J, just to say that upon adoption of a home rule petition, that the 70% restriction would apply. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I second it.
On reading the information that our city solicitor has presented, it seems that if we initiated this 30% of the fair market value, then we'd have to put off the cost of the difference would be borne by all the taxpayers in the municipality. And I don't think I want to put that on our taxpayers. I think they burdened enough without, am I wrong, Mr. Solicitor, in what I'm saying? Because I don't understand.
I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat that?
I don't think so, but I'll do the best I can.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
The relationship between the maximum 70% and the tax passed, passed through to the.
If, if we initiate this through a home rule petition, would then the, the difference would be borne, or burdened onto the taxpayer? Is that what we're saying? In, in the municipality? I don't want to burden our taxpayers any further. Is this what I'm reading?
No, so the home rule petition is separate. By having that home rule petition that would become a House Bill, you would no longer, you don't have to follow 40P at that point, you wouldn't have to make up that difference. That's a distinction between the two.
That's why I'm asking. I, I don't want to burden our taxpayers any further, but if it doesn't include this portion, then I would support that.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. So I mean, the motion on the floor, does, does that exempt the ADU from, from the residential declaring as real estate tax? Is that, is that what we have the motion on the floor about?
Let me ask the maker of the motion to answer that. If you have an answer, or the city manager could try to address the intention of your meeting, of your motion.
I'm, I'm happy to try to, try to address it as the maker. So within the packet, we were provided a copy of the home rule petition that was filed in, in Salem where they did include the, the 70% fair market value restriction. And essentially what the, the home rule petition did was to exempt part of the value of the additional unit onto the home. So I do want to note that this wouldn't, this would still result in more taxes being collected if homeowners add an additional unit to their home and add living space. Even if we passed the, let's call it tax relief, home rule petition, it would still result in more taxes being collected, because if you look at Section 2 of the home rule petition that was filed, it says that such exemption shall be based on the value of an additional bedroom, not the value of the accessory dwelling unit with a kitchen and bath. So essentially, the, the owner of the home is being granted an exemption on, on part of the value of the accessory unit. And this is essentially in exchange for charging below what they could collect in, in the form of, of rent for the unit. And I'll also note that essentially this is part of overall, you know, how the city of Salem was able to legally enforce the rent restriction, given the prohibition against rent control in Massachusetts. So it, I think it's an issue of basic fairness to the, you know, to the, to the owner of the home, and it's also a legal necessity, I would say, in order to be able to enforce the restriction on what can be collected in rent. I hope that answers the question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Robinson, are you done?
Thank you. So what, what percentage of these ADUs would still be declared then? On a 900-square-foot ADU, how much of that is still, would be required to be declared as, as taxable?
Council, drink water, as the maker of the motion?
If that was supposed to, I mean, I can't, I don't think I can personally elaborate more than that the exemption is based upon the value of an additional bedroom. So the, the value of the, in every, to be considered an accessory dwelling unit, the, what is added to the house has to include a kitchen and, and bath. So if we decide to mirror Salem in the way that they did it, the, the kitchen and bath would, would not be included in, in the exemption.
Council Robinson, maybe the CFO could provide some explanation, add some comment. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So by way of background, we did have a conversation with the city assessor who reached out to the assessor in Salem to get a sense of how it works, practically speaking, in Salem. And I'll offer this upfront, that there are a lot of variables at this stage in terms of how the special legislation or the home rule petition would be written. So it's heavily dependent upon how the legislation is crafted by the city council as to how we'll implement it. But with that said, one of the sort of lessons learned from Salem that they expressed to the assessor was that there, there was not a requirement for deed restriction, for affordability, that I, I think in retrospect, they, they would have recommended that to themselves if they, you know, had, had an opportunity to. And so that, that, having a deed restriction requirement for affordability, so it would have to be recorded at the registry that the accessory dwelling unit is affordable, that would make it easier for the assessor's office to reduce the assessment. And so the assessor practically would reduce the value of the accessory dwelling unit and would tax it based on that reduced assessment. And that is how the taxation of the accessory dwelling unit would work. Of course, there are a lot, it's a lot more complicated than that. I'm trying to offer a sort of straightforward version, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And when this matter comes back before the body, Ms. Berdough, the assessor has offered to, to come to provide more detail to the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So that would be just ballpark on a, on a basic example like you gave, $100,000 assessed ADU. If they were doing 70%, they would take, say, 30% off of that $100,000 assessed value, and then they would be pretty much taxed on the $70,000 new value? Is that basic, the way that they kind of do it?
That's correct, Counselor. In a very general sense, that is right. And the assessor also provided approximately, just for the sake of being able to wrap our heads around this, an extra bath adds about $4,200 in assessed value to a property. And so, well, without getting too deep, yes, your description is correct, Counselor.
Thank you. So, so again, ultimately, we would be looking to take less to provide more services, because it's going to, there's going to be more housing as a result of this ordinance. We do also have the option to home rule petition for the cap, the 30% reduction on the rental without the restriction as well, correct? Through you to the solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor?
So without the, without the, not looking at, you know, collecting the, the full tax on the property, an option that's on the table is you can home rule petition for the 30% reduction without any other caveat?
Yes, that, I mean, that certainly would be an option. I'll add a note to that. I think with Salem's home rule petition, there's sort of this, you know, the incentivized pieces in there with the tax exemption, almost like a quid pro quo sort of analysis, like, you know, the max is going to be, it can't go over 70%, but you'll be getting this. With this home rule petition here, if the body chose to, they certainly could move forward and puts, you know, put something in front of legislature that included that 70% language without any other language. I can't predict how that would go, if that would go through. It may, it may not, I'm not sure. I just, with Salem specifically, there is sort of.
I just, with Salem specifically, there is sort of that added piece that kind of goes, falls in line, the logic somewhat similar to the 40p, generally speaking, the logic. But again, you certainly don't, the body does not have to add additional language the way that Salem did, if that were the will of the body.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So, it's a motion on the floor by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counselor Yem. No further discussions.
Repeat the motion, please.
Could we?
Mr. Clerk, if you could, repeat the motion.
Motion by Counsel Drinkwater to add language, standard adding language upon the adoption with a home rule petition, adding language to indicate that...
Mr. Clerk, could you put the microphone? Mr. Clerk, please speak into the microphone.
Maybe the maker can redo, restate the motion.
The maker, Counsel Drinkwater, if you could summarize?
So, the motion is to add language to the draft ordinance in Section 3 Subsection J, stating that the language in Section J shall take effect upon adoption of a home rule petition. And that home rule petition would mirror that which was filed in Salem, which also grants, in addition to allowing the 70% rent restriction, allowing for tax relief on the value of the additional unit.
Counsel Rook?
Thank you for the explanation. And just a quick question to private city manager, you might know this better than anybody else. So, there's a current bill right now in the House, an ADU by right bill. As written as it is right now, much more open than what we're talking about here over the past number of months. If that passes the way it's written right now, does that supersede anything we do here in the chambers?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Not having read it fully, but in understanding the amendment process on the floor, if it would supersede everything, provided it doesn't give a local option. So, it would be a popular piece, I think, at the very end of the rider, that you could give a local option for this. So, it would just depend, Counselor. Sorry to not...
No, it's fine. Yeah, there was no rider in that. As it is written right now, there's no local option.
It's correct.
Right, right. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? So, the motion by Counsel Drinkwater again, second by Counselor Yem. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no.
Could we get a roll call on that, please?
Because by Counsel Robinson, do a roll call. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
The motion on the floor is to add language.
Counsel, Counsel, Counsel Leguizamo?
No.
Counsel Mercia?
No.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
No.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
No.
Counsel Janes?
Yes.
Motion fails.
The next informational report is on Andover Street. Mr. Manager?
So, I'm not sure, are we done that section, then?
On the ADU, is there any other discussion, a motion fail?
Right, so...
You want to discuss more?
Well, no, I, so, does this come back next week? I mean, it's still an ordinance that's been discussed. So, I'm just curious, you know, obviously, Counsel Drinkwater's motion failed. You know, I don't know if that was the final straw in the ordinance, but I just, I guess the question would be is, you know, do we go, you know, can we make a motion to go forward with the home petition, but take out the tax exception that worries, I guess, some counselors?
Yeah. That, those, I understand, just the motion about the 30%.
Right. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, then, to add just the home rule, go for the home rule petition with just the 30% reduction. That's all. No additional language.
Second by Counsel Rook. Okay. You request a roll call, Counsel Robinson? Any discussion on this? Counsel Drinkwater?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the 30% is included in the draft ordinance before us, which, as was in the city solicitor's explanation, you know, the city council can move forward as they, as they wish. We don't need a home rule petition to take a vote on the 70% restriction. I don't feel it's advisable. I believe in the solicitor's analysis, it doesn't appear to be advisable in that it's in clear violation of Massachusetts prohibition on rent control. We could also file a home rule petition to include the language, but it's pretty clear in the legal analysis that without some sort of, as the solicitor put it, quid pro quo, I don't know if that's the exact, you know, proper terminology, but to offset the way the state is clearly spelled out, that you can't enact rent control, it seems to me that we'd be filing a home rule petition that was clearly in violation of state law. So, I guess, I put this in the form of a question to the maker. Are we, by putting forward this motion, are we withdrawing the language from the draft ordinance that's before us and pursuing it in the form of a home rule petition? Is that the, is that the intent of the motion, that we, in order to not pass an ordinance that could be easily challenged, are we withdrawing the Section 3 Subsection J language and pursuing it in the form of a home rule petition only?
Could I make a motion? Counsel Robinson, would you like to respond?
Yes. I clearly asked, again, through you to the solicitor. That is an option on the table. Now, whether or not the state agrees to it, that's something that this council would have to push through and find out. But I'm putting in the form of a motion, a home rule petition specifically for the 30% below the established fair market rent limit for the city law. That alone, no additional language with that component.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does that mean that the, as Counselor Drinkwater stated, Section 3 Subsections J, does that mean that we remove Section 3 Subsection J and then, you know, vote on the motion to have the home rule petition on this matter?
Mrs. Solicitor, if you could help clarify the, based on the request of Counsel Robinson, how would that impact the request from the state on that 30%?
Oh, I think these are two separate things. From what I'm gathering, it seems like the question is being asked to, I think, Counselor Robinson, as to whether or not the language in 3J is going to remain. And at the same time, well, included or separate from that, with the home rule petition that would go forward, it's really unrelated, truthfully. I feel like there's two different things that are kind of being asked at the same time here, so I'm trying to... Is the question for Counsel Robinson whether or not the language in 3J is going to stay or be removed? Is that what you're asking Counsel Noon?
That, that's right, Mr. Solicitor.
So, that would be a legal question. My question is this. Based on the advice in this that came back to us, saying, this is, you can't do this under just the ordinance by right because of A, B, and C, an option on the table is petition the state for a home rule petition in order to do this 30% reduction on the rent. That's an option on the table, so that's the motion on the floor, is exercise that option, file a home rule petition requesting to do the 30% reduction on the rent.
So, for...
Now, how this final document looks, that's, this is a legal document. That's what the Law Department would be responsible for crafting.
So, if I could understand it clearly, for simplicity, Counsel Robinson, based on the solicitor's report, even though it may be not legal by the state, but you feel that it's still, it's just a request to the state?
Can I ask a question? Where is it may not be legal? I asked the Law Department, is this an option that we have as a council to petition, a home rule petition, to do this? I don't know where the illegality is coming from now.
Mrs. Solicitor, could you clarify for us in terms of your recommendation?
Sure, yeah. So, I think the term legal-illegal is, it's not being used correctly in this moment. Really, it's, you're putting together the home rule petition, you're asking the state legislature to pass a bill that is going to allow you to do something that is currently, that currently runs afoul of the law. So, you're, it, that's really where the analysis lies. By including certain things or not including certain things in your home rule petition, that's not illegal or, and, you know, you're simply asking. And they can come back and, they can agree, or they cannot agree. But I guess to just sort of finish that off, yes, if, one of the options, as you described, Counsel Robinson, is to, you can take the language from 3J out, move forward with that, with the ordinance, with the amended ordinance, and you can also put forward a home rule petition with the language that you had mentioned.
Mr. Clerk, before we go to the roll call, could you please read the, or summarize the motion, please?
Counsel Robinson, motion reduce, send a home rule, home rule petition to legislature, just reducing the rent amount by 30%. No other language.
I'm not looking to take that language out. That's something, but also, we need to get permission to do this. So, that's what I'm asking here. The motion on the floor is asking for permission from the state to do this, to make this allowable. I'm not looking to withdraw any language from this document. I'm saying, can we ask for permission from the state to do this? Because without permission from the state, we can't do this.
Counsel Rook?
Thank you. Back to the manager and his prior employment. So, with the bill being filed, that's in the House right now, obviously, it probably goes to a committee and is discussion on it. Possibly, in your experience, when could there be a vote on the bill that's there right now that was filed in January? Would it be, you know, does it have, it has to happen before the next election?
Thank you very, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Obviously, it could be, council could be filed, passed tomorrow, just like this legislative body could do. But typically, something like that, in my opinion, or my experience, would be done sometime next year. It is something that would go before the body as a whole for a final vote in the House, and then obviously, over to the Senate, still has to go through its joint committee process. So, the Joint Committee on Housing, considerably, it's still in that committee, probably wouldn't have its hearing until September, October, November of this year. Once that's put to the floor, that floor vote could probably, and I'm purely speculating, could be January, February, March of 2024, and then waiting for the Senate to act on it. And provided, of course, that the House and the Senate are in the same, in the same ballpark, that they could come to a final resolution on it, it would be probably completed before the end of the biennium, which would be next June 30th of formal voting anyhow.
Thank you.
For clearer, again, Counsel Robinson, would you rephrase your motion for the clerk one more time?
The motion on the floor is file a home rule petition, seeking approval or allowance, or whatever way you want to word it, to put the restriction on the rent to 30, what is it? How is it worded in the document? The maximum rent of the affordable, it's 3J. The maximum rent of the affordable accessory dwelling unit, including utilities and parking, shall be at least 30% below the established fair market rent limit for the city of Lowell as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, seeking approval from the state via home rule petition to do that.
Thank you, Counselor. And second by Counsel Rook. And before we do the roll call, I just want to clear for myself, too, either Mr. Manager or the assist listeners, so regardless of whether this motion passed or failed, does it take anything away from the language that you put in the report that will ultimately be part of the ADU that we'll take a vote on? Does it do anything to the, you know, whether we get an answer in a positive and a negative from the state? How would that affect the overall ADU when we are going to vote on it, when it come before us?
Sure. So, again, this is entirely up to the body, how they want to do this. So, home rule petition, one avenue, absolutely. The ADU ordinance, if everybody so chooses, can go, can go forward as you see fit. Again, it's really up to all of you. I tried to put forward enough information, at least to clarify how 40p works and how the restricting rent works, separate from a home rule petition. But again, it is entirely up to, it's entirely up to the body.
If I could ask one more question, Counsel Gitchia, if I can. So, if, for example, if this motion, let's say we get the negative answer from the state, does that mean we move forward with the vote on ADU for the council that supports it? It would go along with the amendments that we proposed at pass the last meeting, or would that change that? If we were to get the answer from the state in the negative, meaning that the state cannot approve the 30% reduction, the ADU amendments that we passed the last meeting, would that go forward as it was voted?
Well, I think it, it would depend on when the body chose to go forward on the amended, on the amended ordinance. So, if the, if the position is to move forward on the amended ordinance now, then that would already be in place. And it would already be in place by the time the home rule petition went forward and it went up or down. The other side of that coin, I suppose, is if you don't move forward on the ordinance now, you wait out the home rule petition, and then at that point, wait for your answer and move forward from that point. But those are just the two opposite ends of the spectrum. Those would be the two options in terms of the ordinance itself. I think that's what you were asking me.
Counsel Gitchia?
I'm just looking for a, just a point of where we're going here, based off of this. So, as I'm hearing this, we're saying that we want to send this to the state legislator and say, okay, we're not going to give any tax relief, no assessment adjustments, we're going to assess it at market value. And if I'm hearing this correct, and then they're going to be put in to, they're going to be pushed to do affordable housing. Is that, okay, yeah. And I agree, I agree that, you know, people should be assessed for what they have, and this is part of the process. So, I agree with the maker of the motion. Thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, through you to the city solicitor, just to clarify, the ordinance as amended, which has not changed here tonight, the draft before us has not changed, has already been sent or requested to come back to the council for first reading. So, my interpretation is that, completely separate from this discussion on a potential home rule petition, this draft before us will come before the city council in the coming weeks, I have to assume, for a first reading, and then a public hearing. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor, is that correct in terms of process?
Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's where this is at in that order. So, I put this forward to provide some more information, but ultimately, the next step would be that the amended ordinance would go in front of the body, the council, for our first reading.
And just to follow up, Counsel Drinkwater, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
And just to follow up on Counsel Drinkwater's question, so, when the ADU come back for a vote in the coming weeks, and if we don't get the answer back from the state per Counselor Robinson's request, when it come back, we can vote on that to later amend the ADU to include it or not to include it? Is that the understanding also to the maker of the motion? We will, you know, it might not come back on time, but whenever the answer's come back, let's say it's come back in the positive, that meant they will approve it, we could ask the city council body to make amendment further at that point? Is that correct?
So, I...
Mrs. Solicitor?
I, based off of the language that's already in the ordinance, and based off of what I'm hearing, the home rule petition would look like, you actually wouldn't have to make to make any amendments, they would be identical.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Councilor Yem?
I just, um, I just want to make a, a comment on the, um, the memorandum that solicitor gave us, under the section reads analysis slash summary, if you read on the third paragraph down below, the potential issue with the voluntary after six months piece is that if the city were to make rent restriction a requirement for an ADU, once the initial six months after the ordinance is adopted has run, then the ordinance would seemingly run afoul with Mass General Law, see chapter forty P, it would be contradictory to have something that must be voluntarily listed as a requirement. And, and if I also could make this bottom, I, I'm kind of jump up back the bottom of paragraph, uh, two, second paragraph, the concern is that city being required to compensate homeowner, homeowners of rent controlled unit for the difference between below market rent they are charging the tenant and fair market rent, and that's, that's what under the analysis summary. So if you read paragraph two at the bottom, and then add that with the paragraph three, it sounds like if we've passed the ADU as it is right now, and then we all pass, you know, and adopt it and work on it, that after six months, now it's become voluntarily, that homeowner will, uh, require it to get compensated from the city. So all of us now got to pay the homeowner. So that's why the, that's why the home rule petition is necessary or adopt 40P, but 40P is more complicated as stated in the memorandum. The home rule petition is more simple, request similar to Salem did, uh, that state legislature allowed the city, uh, to offset, uh, a restriction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions before we take the roll call?
Can we move the motion?
Council Gishia?
Can we move the motion on the floor, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Clerk, we do have a second already? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Leahy?
No.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
No.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Council Drinkwater?
No.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
No.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, can I, could I suspend the rules?
Hold for a moment, Council Scott, do you have a comment on this one or something else?
I was just going to ask us to suspend the rules. Maybe for the same one, I don't know, maybe not, though.
It's like Council of Scott, go.
Council Scott?
I was just going to ask to suspend the rules for, to take six point three, it's for out of state travel that's happening before our next meeting, so just to make sure it's almost ten o'clock, I want to make sure we get that in. I don't know if there's any other items that-
What number again, Councilor? Motion by Council Scott to suspend the rule, but take item six point three out of order, second by Councilor Gishia. Six point three is communication, city manager requests out of state travel, one DPW. Any comments or questions by new councilors? Uh, here none, need a motion, uh, to adopt by Council Yem, second by Council Robinson. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can we finish these two off and get rid of the page?
Actually, while we're under suspension-
Before we move, while we're under suspension, I-
Uh, Council Gishia?
I'd like to make a motion that whatever we don't finish tonight, um, that we come back on September nineteenth at six thirty and continue from that point.
Okay.
Yes, second.
Uh, Council, motion by Council Gishia, second by Council Mercier, um, any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Do we need a roll call on that one? Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Rook?
I'll vote yes for her, but I won't be able to attend.
Okay. Any other comment? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
You can't attend. All right.
Uh, Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor?
We will move, uh-
While we're still under suspension?
Council Scott?
Can we take the votes from the city manager, seven one, seven two, and-
Before I take them, I just finished this section up really clean because I, so we're done with the ADU discussion, and there was also the information report on Andover Street. Um, there's no discussion on this, correct? Nobody have questions common, Andover Street? Uh, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I, I spoke to traffic engineer, send to a, um, a transportation subcommittee, please. It's a fifty page report, there's a lot of information there, so just-
Second.
Motion sent to a subcommittee, transportation.
On, on Andover Street, uh, motion by Council Rook to send the, uh, Andover Street report to the subcommittee, second by Council Robinson, all in favor, I oppose, they know the eyes have it, motion is carry. Um, we are, we did jump around a little bit, let me just, uh, clean up the motion response, clean, we did skip, but on the motion response that we, uh, discussed, we did not complete it, but on the items that we discussed, I need a motion to accept and place them on file by Council Robinson, second by Council Mercier, on favor, I oppose, they know the eyes have it, motion is carry, so whatever's left from the motion response that we did not, uh, discuss will go on as unfinished business. Council Scott?
I just asked for a suspension to take the votes from the city man, for the city manager that he needs at this time, for seven one, seven two, and I think we have seven four left, so we might as well finish them.
So basically just seven one, seven two left, is that correct?
Oh, okay, seven one, seven two.
Motion by Council Scott to take, uh, suspend the rule, bundle seven point one, seven point two, take them out of order, uh, for a vote, seven point one, vote, accept, expend twelve thousand dollars, address verification program grant, seven point two, vote, apply, accept, expend one hundred fifty thousand mass DEP grant, waste water, any-
We need second.
Questions, Council Yem?
Um, I'm second the motion, you, we need second, right?
Uh, I need a motion by Council Yem, second by Council Scott, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Eleven years.
All right, Council Robinson?
Uh, while we're under suspension, I'd like to make a motion to, um, send the claims, I believe it's nine point one, up to law department, please, um, you know, the, the, these claims have been waiting for three weeks, I think, so far, so I'd like to make the motion to move them up.
No, they haven't, Council, they're just on this meeting, they haven't, they were, that's a new part of the meeting that, they haven't been waiting three weeks.
Well, nine point one, with this is claims miscellaneous, Council Robinson, why don't you, uh, take the motion, um, out of order, suspend the rules, take item nine point one, nine point two out of order, bundle them, take them out of order for a vote tonight, uh, second by Council, uh, Janess?
Nine point five and nine point, nine point four and five, two, might as well.
Let me, uh, ask for an amendment to Council Robinson to suspend the rule and bundle nine point one, nine point two, nine point four, nine point five, nine point six, to bundle all of them, second by, I believe it's Council Leahy, uh, nine point one, claims to property damage, personal injury, nine point two miscellaneous, Bedbek, Gomaya, shoe time, request installation of two overhanging signs located two thirty one Central Street, refer that to the law department. Nine point four miscellaneous, Ashley Mallett, the Green Place, request installation of overhanging sign located thirty six Prescott Street, refer that to law department. Nine point five miscellaneous, Louz Rastrepo, request installation of handicap parking sign located thirty eight Cork Street, uh, refer that to transportation engineer. Nine point six, the last of the bundle, nine point six miscellaneous, Lizard Frostbees, request removal of handicap parking sign at eleven Cedar Street, uh, refer to transportation engineer. Um, motion to adopt by Council Noon, second by Council Gishia, all in favor, I oppose, they know the eyes have it, motion is carry. We have six more minutes.
I know, if we just do all the motions in the next twenty minutes, we don't have to come in next week, right? That's where we are, just, we're just at motions, right?
I, I think, I think you missed, uh, you missed vote on that one, then Council Gishia beat you to the motion. Um, so we can't go back-
So motion adjourned.
To the motion, would you like to, let's beat ten o'clock, motion adjourned by anybody? Do we have a motion on the floor? Council Gishia?
Ten o'clock.
Okay. Let's go back to where we left off, um, on the agenda, and that was the motion response, where we left off was the alphabet E, catch basin cleaning, Council Robinson?
Thank you for the motion response.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, motion response F, Addie Way, Council Scott?
Oh, no, thank you for the report and thank you for the work that you did. It's been a long time coming, six years that they've had that flooding happening, and, and I know it was an LHA and developer issue, but thank you to the city and to the employees that took care of it, and hopefully some short-term relief at least until that project is completed. Thank you.
Special reading on the nineteenth.
Thank you, Councilor. Next motion response, comms, uh, motion response G, Council Scott?
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion response alphabet H, Council Scott?
Yeah, I think, I think for once, um, I don't know if I saw that post of, um, information on two personal ideas, um, it's one of the things that, um, that I've been trying to do, I was working on the students and work on the education of the morning, um, getting that out there, um, unfortunately, we just got to show a damage, um, to the car, and I don't have to hire people in the lab, and I, I appreciate that, but I think long-term teaching, um, it's just going to help us in a long time, but, uh, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. Hate this. Nope. Let me see what's next. Food service for homeless, okay.
Motion, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we actually already discussed this earlier, so, thank you.
Yeah, on behalf of the entire council and the city administration, we want to wish , uh, Councilor, uh, Kim Scott an early birthday, uh, wishes, and may all her wishes come true. She has a big wishes, so that, uh, this November, happy, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Council Scott. Motion by Council Drinkwater to adjourn the meeting, second by Council Gishia, all in favor, I oppose, they know the eyes have it, motion is carry, meeting adjourned.